Are we ready for a voicemail?
We are.
Introduce incidentally, Kelly, I don't know how to pronounce your last name, but you'll help me.
Burkaway.
Nancy Ide is not here today and she's taking over. I indicated I give her a bad time, but I really won't. So, voicemail, please.
Miss Nusita.
Here.
Commissioner Nusita.
President.
Commissioner Roth.
President.
Mayor North.
Commissioner Rocky Smith is overseas early at this time. And with that, if you please, go in the place. My flag of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party stands one nation under one power, indivisible, universal, and just one. Now the time that we have for citizen comments, for things that are not on the agenda, for things that are agenda, we generally open those areas to comments with those things. Anybody that wishes to come forward, if they would leave a card with our Kelly and leave a card there. And all you have to do is state your name and whether or not you reside in Oregon City. And we want to keep it down to three minutes, please. So are there any, do you have any requests?
If I might, I think you have a presentation before.
Oh, excuse me, I sure do. And before that, I will take a very distinguished citizen. Our Metro Councilor Carlotta Colette is here. My apologies.
Thank you. Sasan? Sasan, red light, okay, good. Mayor Neely.
You've been in Oregon City.
I'm in Oregon City. I'm Carlotta Colette. I reside in Milwaukee. But Oregon City is part of Metro District 2, and so I am your Metro Councilor and proud to be so. And proud to be, I think this is only my second time in your new city hall, and as I was heading up the hill, I thought, "Don't go to the city hall, it's a wonderful building." And again, somewhat, it's, you've been here six months now? Wow, yeah. No, 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 not that long. I couldn't have been here that, it's been that long since I've been here. Oh, this is terrible. What I've been telling all of the cities in my district is that the kind of routine among Metro councilors is to come out to our cities when there's an issue that we need your input on. But at least one other councillor tries to come every quarter, and I'd be happy to do that, just to keep you updated. I happen to have more cities than anybody on the Metro Council, so I'm sort of shooting for three times a year in order to get out here, really to keep you informed. And tonight's, my presentation is really just to bring you up to date on the kinds of things that we're doing. If you have specific questions, please, you know, interrupt me, ask me your questions. I've put a bunch of goodies in front of you. This is kind of high, I'm trying to, there it is. It's not right in my face. And I'll just walk through some of these, just to give you a sense of what we're up to these days and how we're engaging people. I did put a copy of my business card there, in case you need to contact me. I think most of you know how to reach me. There's also a little card that's our connect to Metro card. If you're in order to get any news on specific issues on a regular basis, you can just use the websites on the back. And to anybody in the audience, I have extra copies of any of these if people are interested. Or you can get any of this information just by going to Metro's website, and it's just www.organmetro.gov. And then from there, you can go to news, or open spaces, or any of the number of places that you might be interested. I've also put in front of you a little fold-out called Great Places. And it's our first annual report on all of our venues, including the Portland Centers for the Performing Arts, which we don't own, but we operate for the cities of Portland, for the city of Portland, the Portland Expo Center, the Oregon Zoo, and the Oregon Convention Center. And the big news here is that together, these institutions provide 6,000, actually, this is 600 jobs, it's 700 jobs, 6,700 jobs in the region. $680 million in revenue last year from these facilities. It turns out to be just under $2 million a day that these institutions bring to our region. 3.4 million visitors at these four venues. And it's up, the spending at those venues is up 18% over 2009. So 2010, at least at the metro-operated venues, things are looking better than they were in 2009. I also put in front of you a little information piece for you and for your citizens about classes, workshops, free coupons, tours, that people interested in organic gardening, or organic cleaning, you know, getting away from toxins in their homes. Again, you can get this information at oreganmetro.gov/garden. We'll have most of this information. The big news, I think, from my perspective, as somebody whose background is in public involvement, is that Metro is conducting an experiment with the Northwest Health Foundation, United Way of Columbia Willamette, and Portland State to have an online, essentially our own focus group online. And we're already at over 2,000 people who've signed up. And I would really love it if people in my district became the big participants. Obviously, Multnomah County outnumbers us, but I don't think the opinions are any stronger than those in Oregon City, or in this district, or in Clackamas County. So I would encourage all of you to go to, again, oreganmetro.gov/Connect, and sign on, opt in, and give us your opinions. This is probably the first time the government has done this in the United States. So we're really out there. We are partnering with these particular partners because we want to get a broad diversity of our citizens. Oregon Health Northwest really reaches out to minority communities, to people in need. Portland State, obviously, students, but others. And United Way, again, reaches communities that are not normally reached by government. So we're hoping to get a broad spectrum of opinion through this survey. Also, at your place, I've put an invitation to a couple of open houses where we'll be talking about our draft master plan for how we plan to use the $125 million that the voters of this region approved to the zoo for our new veterinary hospital, new elephant care facilities onsite, potential for an off-site elephant facility, which is likely to have to be in Clackamas County. The leading site right now is the old Roslin Lake site, and it's, I'm kind of rooting for that one because it's a really great location. I think our elephant, our elephant herds, we plan to have herds in the future, will be quite at home there. And I don't think people realize that there are very few places left in the wild for Asian elephants. So the Oregon Zoo is looked at by the world as the world's leading caretaker of these elephants, and the most successful breeder of these elephants, which could become very, very rare. And since most of future Asian elephants will be in reserves, like this Roslin Lake, or whatever the facility ends up being, I'm just putting a little picture in there. We will be setting the example for the world of how to raise elephant herds in captivity, but in a pretty new concept of what captivity means. 250 acres, as opposed to a zoo bin, or, you know, a giant space at a zoo. Hopefully, more than doubling our onsite space for elephants at the zoo. We're improving conditions for penguins, for polar bears, for a number of our species of primates. So I invite anybody who's interested to come to one of these open houses. They'll be at the zoo Thursday, March 31st, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., and Saturday, April 2nd, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. And they'll get a sense of, as this says, how we're changing our spots, how we're looking at the future of the zoo. Our goal is to be the most sustainable zoo on the planet, and to have the best animal care on the planet. And I think we're going to get there. I think we will be recognized. I also want to make sure that you've received an invitation to our Climate Leadership Summit. First, this is officially a joint meeting of the Metropolitan Policy Advisory Committee, which advises the Metro Council on land use, and the Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation, which is our decision-making regional body on transportation issues. But it's really for all electeds in the region, as well as planning commissioners and interested citizens. We really want to hear from our communities about how we will address climate change and economics viability in this region. So I think this would be a really great opportunity. Some of you may have been signed up for Metro 101, the program that we operate every election year, to kind of bring newly-elected leaders into Metro and kind of work with you, to help you to understand how Metro works in the region, and what our relationships are like, what our history is. You may know that that was, the last one was canceled because of the impending storm that didn't intend. And so it has been rescheduled for March 30th, 6:30 to 8:30 in Happy Valley. And I would encourage any of you who want to understand more about how Metro works and what we can do with our communities, I would encourage you to attend that. I also put a new little flyer just in background around Metro in front of, for each of you. And I also want to invite you to Seven Rules for Sustainable Committees presentation. This is a grumbling lunch meeting Tuesday, March 29th, from 11:30 to 1:00. And that one is a nationally, internationally-recognized speaker, who has some really good advice about communities, particularly in these trying economic times. Updates, as many of you know, last fall, we, along with Washington County, Clackamas County, and Multnomah County, adopted urban and rural reserves. And those were by law accepted by the Land Conservation Development Commission, LCDC. One large chunk, 600 and some acres north of Cornelius in Washington County, was remanded last night, and frankly, all day yesterday. We met jointly with Washington County, nine-hour meeting. No one anticipated it would be that long, but we started at 10:00 in the morning, took public comment, and began actually deliberating somewhere around 5:30 last night. And the two, the county and Metro did come to an agreement. We came to a compromise. The county had been proposing an acre-for-acre match of switching out the land north of Cornelius, farmland north of Highway 26. The Metro Council was opposed to that unanimously. And we ended up at a little bit, about 250 or so acres north of Highway 26 that will be urban, and some other areas around the map that are undesigned, but actually, we're ending up with substantially fewer acres of urban reserves in Washington County. And I know, at least in Clackamas County, that was a big concern, that Washington County, with its foundation farmland, not be the only place that has a lot of industrial and job growth in the future. It doesn't bode well for regional balance. So I think we came to a really good compromise. It was totally live-action decision-making. It was, anyone who saw it, it was quite an amazing experience. It was, you know, they would vote, and then we would vote, and then they would vote, and then we would vote. And it went back and forth until we finally had a motion on the table that was a compromise motion that we could all agree to. Not unanimously, but enough of a majority on each side. So the next steps are that that will go to, we will make ordinance decisions in, I think, April, and it will go back to LCDC. And with any luck, by the end of the summer, we will have urban and rural reserves on which to base the future land, urban growth boundary decisions in this region. It has a huge significance, I think, for Oregon City, for all of our communities at the edge. Because without urban reserves, we would go back to the old process of adding land based on soil types. And that would mean places like Stafford, areas around Beaver Creek, some of those places would be the first choices, rather than the places that make the most sense, from urban farm, community, economic development, jobs, you know, those other values wouldn't come into play. So we will be very happy to put urban reserves to bed, and have a much stronger basis for future decision-making. Couple of other things. We have been partnering with you, actually, with Oregon City, on bringing in Michelle Reeves, who's worked with Metro on a number of communities, and she met with some of your downtown business leaders. I think, I don't know if any of you were able to go on the tour, but some of our group then went on a tour of North Williams in Portland to see how some pretty inexpensive, but targeted changes in your downtown can really change, have a strong impact on the liveliness, the viability, the success of the businesses downtown. So I hope that was useful. You, of course, have the regional jewel in Lloyd Purdy, who is just tremendous, working on your Main Street program. So I think Lloyd's already met with and talked with Michelle Reeves. You've probably used her already, but this was an opportunity, again, to engage a couple of communities, and hopefully, we'll do more of that. We also partnered with you at Canema. Last year, you bought a chunk of land pretty much between your city park and our large area, and we helped you to get a grant to do some work on your children's park there. In the future, we hope we'll be able to use that land and the land around it to help complete this Oregon City Loop, or let's say, start the Oregon City Loop Trail. It's kind of a glimmer in the eye of all of ours. It's a regional asset, but it's a huge asset for your community. So we're partnering with you on that. And I think, I mean, there's a whole lot going on, but I wanted to at least give you kind of the top of the issues. And then I wanted to also give you, and I'll give these, I guess, to Nancy. We have been creating these toolkits for the region over the last several years. And the most recent one was just released this spring. It's on eco-efficient employment, how to restore brown fields and get the most jobs for the smallest financial and natural resource input. And we've got some great examples from around the world of places that have done this. I've got a CD for you and a hard copy. The previous one with innovative design codes, and I think you probably have seen this, but I just wanted to remind you, as you're looking at, if you're looking at new design codes in your community, we have some models from around the country and around the world that might be useful. And then the first in the toolkit was the financial incentives piece, and that was new funding, financing mechanisms for communities. And a number of Metro communities have found great examples in all of these that they're now utilizing in their communities. So that's, that's kind of the, I haven't been doing too long, but that's the overview of what's happening in the region. And I just wanted to, you know, let you know what's going on, hear from you, if you have particular needs, if you'd like more presentations like this, or if you're more comfortable with me just coming out when I need to get your advice on something, or when I have something specific to deal with this community about. So questions, or?
Just one comment. They do, only if people attending Climate Leadership Conference, they do want people to enroll right now.
Yes, please. And RSVP, do enroll for that, because we will, the space is relatively limited. We've already had to change rooms once, because we are expecting more of a turnout than we had originally anticipated. And I'm trying to find where you at RSVP. I guess the contact person for this is Dylan Rivera at Metro. So it's, I'll leave a couple of these in the back room, in case anybody else is interested. I've got, actually, I have copies of everything I handed out, so if there's anybody in the audience who's interested, I can meet them out in the hall, so I don't put a humbling bunch of paper.
I was just going to say, Lloyd Purdy did organize a tour with the Main Street people to Markowitz. True.
Right, yeah, and through Metro, we helped put that together. We did two, two communities this time. We're actually looking at a big budget cutback. We had, Robert Liberty and I on the council head, subsidized about $800,000 over the past couple of years to do these kinds of projects. That money's gone, so we're looking at, seeing if we can find somewhere in the budget to allocate at least a small portion back in. Because from our experience, communities like this actually getting the on-the-ground advice has been very helpful. So we're going to try to put some money back into that fund to keep doing these projects.
That's great.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We also have a presentation for the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, talking about the sea hazing issue. Come forward.
Sea lion hazing?
Okay. Thank you. I think. We have a screen for our presentation. That was you and I talked on the phone, actually. You did, Doug. Yeah. Now, for the record, my name is Todd Murtaugh, and I am a district fish biologist with the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife out of Clackamas. And I greatly appreciate the permission, the mayor, and others who have asked me to come out to present on this important topic. It's something that has surfaced recently from neighbors in Canema and above us, relative to noise levels. And in pursuing our job to address all concerns, I'm glad to have been invited down here to present on this and present the information that I think will at least give folks an idea of what we're trying to achieve. So, thank you. A little bit about me first. This is our district surrounding Portland. I represent the district to the left in brown, covering the area from Claskinide to the north, along the Columbia, down to the Amhill River, and work with multiple, multitude of various projects on the Lower Willamette. Todd Ellsbury works to the right in the yellow area. So let's get on with sea lion hazing, excuse me, sea lion hazing in the Willamette River. Here's a California sea lion. Looks rather round and fat, has been feeding on fish, and is sitting on a dock at Sports Craft Marina, overlooking fairly intense spring Chinook fishery last year. So what's going on with sea lions, and why are they here in Oregon City, and why are they working on fish runs up against Willamette Falls? This is obviously an aerial shot of Willamette Falls looking down. As you can see, it's a fairly impressive falls, and it's a classic horseshoe-shaped falls, which means it is being eroded back upstream. It was formed over 200,000 years ago from lava flows off large mountains, my understanding, from some information I got. And so for thousands of years, fish have moved into this area to get upstream into spawning areas above the falls. And for thousands and hundreds of thousands of years, marine mammals have probably pushed their way to chase these fish upstream to this area. However, you can notice the now new conformation around it, which has changed things from the natural. And we now have a power plant on both sides, one in Axon over there on the right, PG Powerhouse, and the Westland Paper Mill, and on the east side, the Blue Heron. So here's the setup. Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife and others redid the fish ladders. There were some other fish ladders here prior to the early 70s, but in 1971, as my understanding, a complete reconstruction of the fish ladders were made. Those red numbers indicate the orifices by which the fish move into the area to get upstream. As you can see with all the turbulence, it creates a situation where fish are a bit confounded in trying to find the routes upstream now that the falls have changed. The various slots that used to be there for their migration are now blocked, and now they are dependent completely on getting through the fish ladders. So those are the numbers representing the four orifices by which the fish advance upstream and get through the ladder. Here's an old picture from about 1885 of the big slab of basalt lava that used to exist underneath all those mill complexes. To the right is the lochs, and to the left and out and forward is the waterfall. As you can see, there's a lot of different shoots where naturally Steelhead and Spring Chinook were able to get above Willamette Falls in the past. Looking from the Oregon City side back across, before those mills were constructed, this is what the area looked like. So, marine mammals. What's the situation with marine mammals, and why are we here hazing them, and what's going on with them? Well, marine mammal populations, as we know, were pretty well hard-hit for over 200 years for whaling, sea otter trade, fur trade, and also from commercial fishing interests in protecting their catch by keeping sea lions and seals out of bays, and pretty much just shooting at them at will as they needed to because of the competition effects that they brought upon their fish. So by 1971, it was recognized that these animals were needing protection. So in 1972, the Marine Mammal Protection Act was brought on and approved. Following that, the Endangered Species Act. So that protected all marine mammals, whales, sea otters, seals, sea lions, and others. Following that, the populations prior to the early 70s in California sea lions had dropped down to about 30,000 animals on the west coast. And that was from a prior population of probably in the 400,000 to 500,000, which was the healthy number of sea lions pre-European settlement. As the years wound on, following the initiation of those acts, there was a steady increase in sea lions and seals. And also, because they were federally protected, and you couldn't just shoot them, the animals began to advance into all our bays and our rivers. And so currently, the population of California sea lions, at least, stands at 300,000 to 350,000 on the west coast, from California north to B.C. So what's going on here in Oregon City? Well, from about 1980 to 2000, there was observations of sea lions in the general area. From '97 to 2002, with the general increase in sea lions and the interest in protecting primarily winter steelhead, which were starting to dip, and due to their federal listing in '97 as well, we initiated a hazing operation on the fish ladders, which I showed you earlier. And it was strictly from the fish ladders. In 2010, there was another fairly significant dip in steelhead numbers. And it was brought to our attention that we should probably be thinking of doing something about this, and what should we do? So Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife and others decided that hazing, we'd give hazing another try, but instead of just working from the fish ladders, we'd ramp it up and work and operate both from a boat and from the fish ladder collectively. So in 2011, in 2010, we did a pilot project. We initiated it. We went out about seven times, and we had about eight to 13 California sea lions foraging in the general area at that time. This year, there's seven or eight currently working in the area. So what's their life history? Why do they come here? In midfall, obviously, sea lions, their primary food source is fish. And so when coho begin to arrive into the area around Oregon City, we get a couple of California sea lions following those fish in. Then the numbers decline, they move out of the area, the coho returns drop off. Well, when the steelhead and spring chinook begin to move in, then the California sea lions begin to move upstream and forage on these fish that begin to congregate below the fish ladders as they try and find their way upstream. And then after feeding and getting, you know, feeding heavily, in June, they depart south to the Channel Islands, which is one of their primary breeding areas. Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife counts every fish that goes over Willamette Falls. We have a pretty good idea of what the runs are doing, and it gives us an idea or a way of properly managing those fish. That picture is of coho, by the way, which is now a substantial run at Willamette Falls. The main species of fish, however, that we're concerned about are the winter steelhead. And here's kind of a running graph from about 1971 to current. And in 1971, we had hatchery programs, so it was kind of a mixed group of fish here. And this is the collective total of fish that went over the falls. And it kind of rollercoastered around. We had some pretty good runs in the 2000s, and then they started dropping off in the early 1900s, excuse me, 1990s, until we started getting into very low numbers in '96 to '97. Well, '97, they were federally listed, and because of these drops in numbers, and that's when we initiated our first hazing operation. The numbers climbed a little. There were no more hatchery winter steelhead being released above the falls. So everything we see now is counted as a wild winter steelhead. So we know really what our run strength is annually. Looking over to 2010, when we initiated this hazing project last year, you can see another major dip in our numbers. So what's the purpose for hazing? Well, primarily, what we really want to achieve is to reduce predation on winter steelhead that congregate in front of those ladders, and also spring chinook. And to do that, hazing is one of our best tools at this point in time. We want to test hazing techniques, see what kind of equipment's going to work at keeping the sea lions back away from the fish ladders, which is the area where they find fish eating very easy. In the turbulence, the sea lions are quite capable predators. The fish are kind of confused, looking for their way through the ladders, and the sea lions have a great opportunity of getting a hold of the fish. lions have a great opportunity of getting a hold of the fish. We also wanted to determine how effective, the effectiveness of our hazing, and to evaluate the sea lion behavior pursuant to the hazing, and then develop recommendations for 2012, should we move this hazing operation forward. Predation is a limiting factor also, as outlined in our Upper Willamette River Recovery Plan for salmon and steelhead, for recovering populations of federally listed spring Chinook and winter steelhead. So, getting started, first, we hired and trained four temporary biologists. Here's the four now, getting a kind of a firsthand look at the falls prior to getting rolling. They went through rigorous firearm training, and they went through a federal background check under state law. They need to have gone through these processes in order to become able to work and handle firearms under these kinds of conditions. This is the approved hazing tool. I know folks were kind of concerned about the noise, and what are we doing? How are we hazing? And what are the tools that we are using? The primary device is the one in the middle called a cracker shell. That's the one that you hear most. It's dispensed with a 12-gauge shotgun, and it's designed to create a fairly significant noise, not unlike what you remember as an M80 or something from the past, is about the sound of a cracker shell. It goes in the water, it's fairly well muffled if it happens in the air, it makes a pretty loud pop sound. Rubber buckshot is what we use at close range on docks now, and only in safe situations where we know that there's no public around the area or anglers working in boats or trolling in that general location. Following the cracker shell dispensing, the sea lions inevitably dive, the sound, and then we deploy underwater devices that you see on the right. The team went through boat training. And then, we did some reconnaissance work, just staging, going through, working out the wrinkles, making sure everybody's working and operating in a safe manner before we actually started shooting. And then, we started hazing midlake that week of February 7. Monitoring occurs. Portland State University has a class going now, and they have monitors out there on two different shifts, eight to 12 and 12 to four, to give us a good idea of what the feeding behavior is on the fish, and how the sea lions are acting up against our hazing actions. So, what are we finding out? There's an immediate response to the hazing. Sea lions do not like us on the water hazing them. They are very distracted, and it completely disrupts their foraging behavior. So, as long as we're...
I have a question. If your cracker, you were talking about the middle one, goes off in the air as opposed to underwater, which is more effective?
If the, Commissioner Roth, excuse me, if the cracker shell goes off in the air over the sea lion's head, it has an immediate effect. The sea lion sounds, it dives down. And inevitably, these sea lions now know who we are and what's going on. So, they're, they sound and they dive. And we drive the boat to within 100 feet upstream of the area, and that's where we deploy the underwater devices.
But you said there was a difference in the sound in that cracker if it deploys underwater as opposed to in the air? What's effective?
The most effective is above them. But they'll hear it in the water, too. And so, that's why we've been deploying two to three at a time. One goes off, they sound, and then they hear the other two above them. So, they know that, you know, we mean business, and it's time to start moving downstream. So, we've also determined that hazing from the boat and ladder at the same time seems to be the most effective. It gives us an opportunity to work from the ladder to haze the animals out of kind of areas they're hiding or feeding on around the ladder. We get them out into the open, which would be straight ahead from where those two fellows are standing, out into open water. And then, from there, they can haze to the water again. And then, from the boat that would be working just a little bit downstream, then they can get on the animals and work them downstream to the arch bridge. So, 2010, we found that we could actually move the sea lions off the fish ladder. However, we were only operating on a four to five-hour workday, so it wasn't a long extended time. And lo and behold, the sea lions would move right back into feeding stations about 15 minutes to an hour after we left. In 2011, we're on a four to five-day work week. Pretty much, it's not a dawn to dusk, but those are the operating hours. They're working either eight hours or 10 hours, depending on their work schedule. So, they'll start at 6:00 a.m. and be on the water by 6:30 or 7:00. And we can pretty well keep the sea lions back from the fish ladders, and their feeding disrupted. But again, when we leave, it's not more than an hour before the sea lions know that we're gone, and it's time to get back to feeding. Sea lions are very good at avoiding us. There's all kinds of places for them to hide. Up by the waterfall, they actually back into the recesses under the waterfall. They can get in behind the lochs, hidden behind the floating dock that we just built on the river across from Oregon City on the Westland side, and multiple other points. So, in 2010, they would also be observed. They would swim directly back downstream, and then they'd just say, "Well, we'll just take a break. We'll get up on the Sportscraft dock and hang out until these guys leave and know who's going to bother us." So, smart as they are, anyone have a fish? So, anyhow, in 2011, and working with the property owner at Sportscraft, we got to go ahead and actually use the rubber buckshot, and we're going to probably use beam backgrounds on them here in the near future. We've got an order in to test those devices out as well, to see if they'll be effective. Again, we've got boats, we've got the public, we've got other things going on around there. And we're doing everything we can to make sure that our activities are very safe, and the team knows that in no uncertain circumstances they need to shoot unless they know they've got a 360 idea of what's going on around the sea lions. So, high water complicates operations, obviously. The sea lions can get under the waterfalls and disappear. They can use the current to dive and sound and literally go about a quarter mile downstream before they sound. They go almost all the way back to the arch bridge from those points and resurface. So, they can get into the following of that current and really go. They can go down for over five minutes or longer. There's an area to the right of us, which is upstream, in a place called a horseshoe. That's an area that's really hard to get at them. However, during high water, they tend not to be able to get up there to feed. So, this is what's coming in April. This is what happened last April. We had a very remarkable spring Chinook run and a lot of boats. So, the issue here now is hazing and public safety. 99% of the anglers out there like what we're doing. We're trying to do something under what is given to us under federal law, and, but it does complicate things when sea lions come down and we can't haze them beyond those points safely. Other complicating factors, there's some guides that work different fisheries. They'll come all the way up. We arrive, and they're sitting there fishing, and they've got some high-end people who want to fish, and so, we've got to kind of obligate ourselves to their time as well. And we usually go over and communicate with them and say, "Hey, you know, what kind of time are you looking at fishing here?" So, we can start hazing or not. Other issues, natural resource issues, there's a big Heron rookery downstream. That's one of the reasons why we opted not to haze below the I-205 Bridge because of that reason. There's that, and then there's a lot more homes down along the left bank, looking downstream. There's parks, and then there's a hotel there. We just decided I-205 Bridge would be a good cutoff for this year. So, with that, I'll take any questions? That's a brand on a sea lion that got branded in Astoria.
I think, when I've been thinking about this presentation and the concerns that citizens have expressed, the unanswered question for me is, when can I assure the citizens that this is going to end? Because it seems that depending on what your experiments tell you, if the most effective way to haze the sea lions are cracker shells, after all of your experiments are done, that's what your conclusion is, does that mean henceforth, every year, the citizens in the McLaughlin Neighborhood in Canema have months and months and months of cracker shells to endure, every day, I mean, for that season? I mean, that just, that just boggles my mind that, that, that would be, you know, for several months, that would be an incessant noise that to endure. So, I mean, you know, when, what's the prospect that peace and quiet will return to the community?
When the sea lions leave.
As soon as it stops, they come back.
With all due respect, President Sieda, I appreciate your concerns completed, and these are the questions we need to answer. We were not fully aware of the amount of concern that was being raised by the neighbors up on the bluff and over in Canema. This year, with the elevated efforts, it obviously came to everybody's, you know, it became obvious that the noise was a concern for some. And so, right now, we're just, our intent is to continue to haze through April, which is when the steelhead run terminates or really winds down. Understanding the spring Chinook run is going to be beefy again this year, and can probably handle a predation to some degree, that end of April is going to be, for this year, our time to end. So, this year, it was February through April, didn't start till early mid-February. And next year, if this moves forward again, then that would probably be the same timeframe. At least, that's what's expected. Without further discussion from the neighbors and from the commission here that represents those neighbors, you know, we certainly would enjoy more conversation.
My understanding, you have had or have scheduled a meeting with a, what we call C I C, Community Involvement Council, is that right?
We have had some discussion with them, but I haven't had the meeting with them yet. And I would certainly appreciate a meeting of that nature to bring this kind of information to them.
I've got a couple of questions. One is that we see more restrictions on sturgeon fishing, and my understanding is you've added this to the sturgeon population of the falls, is that right?
Yes, we do, yeah.
But your hazing is not directed towards the protection of the sturgeon?
Well, it's to protect all the major fish species that are in this area, sturgeon being one of them. They're not federally listed, but their numbers are significantly going down, in part due to a lot of predation over Bonneville with the Stellaors. And they are feeding over, we have Californians mostly in this area, and they are feeding on the sturgeon as well, but seem to target mostly the steelhead and spring Chinook.
The other question I had, you said you were hazing during the Coho run, is that right?
No, we're not.
Oh, you're not? Because my understanding, Coho typically do not go above the falls.
Well, they do now.
Is that because of weather configuration?
That's allowed for that, yes. But there's a, there's a lot of Coho now that do move over, and that has lured in sea lions earlier than we have seen them in the past. So, they're now here in the fall time.
But I was going to say, did, and I'm just concerned about additional hazing. Considering the Coho were not traditionally above the falls, would there be any real need for, to go for a extended hazing to protect Coho?
Not at this time. Not at this time, Mayor Neil.
One observation, it's not just people on the bluff. I live five blocks back from the bluff, behind the bank of trees, and it's very disruptive. Second one is, what population threshold do these sea lions have to reach to come off the endangered species list?
Commissioner Roth, that's being reviewed right now at the federal level. Overall, the general consensus among marine biologists is that the population off of, off of the United States at least, is doing fairly well. And there is some discussion about having them delisted. Where that is in the process, I can't honestly tell you. It's at the federal level, but there is some discussion about it.
Question. The California sea lions are not on endangered species list, are they?
No, they're not.
They're on, and predicted by the Marine, the Marine Mammals Act.
Right.
Now, the U S still on sea lions, there is, if we are on endangered.
Yeah, the Stellaors are listed threatened under the Endangered Species Act, and we have had observations of one Stellaors in this area. And then, last year, we had an observation of a Stellaor in the area. So, they are casual transit animals into this area.
But the main, the main culprit, as it were, are the California sea lions, which are not on the U S.
Exactly, but they are federally protected under the Marine Mammal Protection Act. That does give us a little more latitude in terms of what we can do to haze, but there's not much else we can do underneath the current structure of the law.
I'm just wondering, jurisdictionally, do you need permits from somebody to do what you're doing? I don't think the city's jurisdiction extends into the Willamette River, does it? So, that's strictly between the public government, I imagine? It's your own authority to do this.
President Sieda, I respect that question. We go to the National Fish Service, that is the authorizing agency that looks over these animals, manages them on, over Marine Mammal Protection Act and the E S A. So, we have memorandums of agreement and a permit through a couple of channels that gives us the authorization to haze. And additionally, you know, we have also coordinated with the county sheriff, the state police, and the local police jurisdictions on both sides of the river. We've talked to the mill owners. So, we did a lot of, and we did a lot of media work initially. There's probably four or five news channels that picked this up, and we did some media coverage that way. And there was at least three or four newspapers that brought this out as well, earlier on, back in January and early February.
Other questions? Thank you for taking the time, Congressman Sieda, appreciate it.
Great, thank you very much. And if there is an interest in having this presentation to the Canema and the bluff neighborhoods in the C I C, I, that would be a great time to bring more information out and hear from them. Because, you know, our agency isn't about just, just doing this. There's a very strong public concern here, and we'd like to address that.
I mentioned that, at least I think Commissioner Roth mentioned it. Surely, he didn't notice it until the mill started stopping. The wind is probably there, but it got grounded out to some degree.
Yeah. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Well, now, we have the chance for citizens. All right, so, Ryan, do you want to bring up two at a time? Or that'll be, it's Ron Igaman and Jackie Hammond-Williams. And if I mispronounce your name, please tell me when you come up here. Please come up. Jackie, you were first. No, Ron is yours, I apologize. Now, I guess you're, is, are you here? Come on up. You want to speak? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jackie Hammond-Williams. I'm a resident of Oregon City and the manager of the Oregon City Farmers Market. Good evening, Mayor Neil and Commissioners. I would like to speak up in support of the Downtown Economic Improvement District and the continuance of the Main Street program. Lloyd Purdy was a great help when we were planning the new downtown markets last year, and has been an enduring source of support ever since. The whole downtown area has become much more vibrant since Lloyd arrived to take the helm. Revitalizing an area such as this takes someone with constant focus and drive, someone who thinks outside the box and who is willing to put in long hours and really champion the cause. We have such a person in Lloyd Purdy. I hope that, should the downtown businesses be in agreement, he would see fit to continue the Main Street program. Thank you.
If anybody wishes to speak to that, we can ask all side of the street. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ron Igaman, and I just wanted to comment about the, I've heard about the mall that we're considering putting in off 213. Oregon City is a unique place historically, geographically, and culturally. Adding a mall by the freeway does not complement the uniqueness of the area. I think a mall would make Oregon City actually more like San Jose. No offense to somebody from San Jose, but I think we have a different kind of place here. We need to restore, revitalize, and rejuvenate our existing town rather than smother it in yet another mall beside the freeway. Thoughtful leadership should continue to encourage environmentally and culturally wise path of reworking and improving Oregon City's good existing foundations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paula Blackwell, Oregon City. I want to speak about the hazing. I have a dog and two dogs, and I walk them every day. And I, I just found out that my boy dog has a heart murmur. And every time he's at the bombing door, he, his heart starts pumping. He goes and hides, and he runs in the bushes. Besides him, it is... Besides, it's, it is, um... Very much disrupting my day, my life, my real life. And I think there's a lot more fishermen out there than there are sea lions getting the fish. I, I saw at least fifty boats up there, and, you know, all this bombing over seven or eight sea lions seems ridiculous to me, and I just want it to stop. It's not okay, it's like, I live for two, and my mammals, and it shouldn't protect it as well. I just don't agree with the noise. And if you can't, if you have to do this job, and I was thinking that maybe you could just do it during a certain amount of time, since it's, they seem to be coming back anyway, maybe just do it from twelve to three, so that I can walk my dog in the morning and in the afternoon without having to hear all that noise.
Which neighborhood association you're, which neighborhood association you're affiliated with, McLaughlin or Kanema, you know?
McLaughlin.
I think you have an opportunity to speak there, at that neighborhood association, and we're passionate, and we talk to, we should talk directly.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Greg Smith, I reside in Oregon City. I'm here on behalf of the State Public Schools, I serve as a volunteer board member, and the purpose of my being here is to request a consideration of a certain fee, just briefly on this question. The school is actually a small local business and employs approximately twenty-three full and part-time people, eight of which live here in town, many of others live close by the community, spend money and get services locally. In nineteen ninety-three, the school assessed thirty-one thousand, eight hundred, some odd dollars for sewer extension assessment for the area. And by equate that based on the current CPI, that equals forty thousand, five hundred dollars in approximately, the, we would like to look up to the city sewer, the fee is twenty-four thousand, seven hundred, some odd dollars. And by add the three together, you're getting close to nearly seventy-five thousand dollars in today's dollars for the privilege of being connected to the city sewer, from which ongoing this school would be paying monthly sewer fees, which are no problem. So, based on the fact that schools already paid equivalent of forty thousand, five hundred dollars, making today's dollars back in nineteen ninety-three, just for extension of the sewer system, and the fact that it's not going to pass the city, twenty-five thousand dollars to have the inspected by the city, which is high, the cost to city would be quite simply less than that, you will have cost. Also, considering that it's been, at a number of times, both now the city, lots of small businesses and schools, and in fact, it is a five-month C3 evaluation of it from that, but it's a small local business that employs people, there's also other site and type of place, which I hadn't mentioned, that live locally or from out of town. I would like to request the city would consider some reduction in the fee, that would not put it down in approximately twelve thousand, five hundred dollar range in that area, and the overall impact of the original nineteen ninety-three fee in today's dollars plus the fee is more of tangible fiscal. Thank you.
Have you, have you been arranged with the city to our city manager?
I have not done that.
And it's scheduled, me and Chris talk with you and Chris.
Yeah, typically, that's fine to either commission, and I don't even think it was this particular commission, but they're, they're like me, they're, have to operate under a set of city ordinances, and we have an ordinance that covers the assistance development charges that you're talking about. And typically, there's, there may be some exemptions in there for people, there's sometimes some relief, depending on the nature of it. There's a bankrupting provision that allows you to finance that fee over a long period of time, so it's not so onerous in the beginning. Your particular situation, I'd be happy to talk to you about it, and set up that meeting, and we'll look at the ordinance to see if there's any, what kind of room there is there for us to maneuver, but typically, there isn't very much, other than bankrupting. But we'll certainly listen to your sentiments and try to work with you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no other people on my list. Coming forward, we'll go ahead and proceed with the agenda, and except on the, with the adopted agenda, I do have one question. We, we've got one second reading of an ordinance listed under, under the public, public hearings, then we have another one that's listed under general business. I, I would suggest, maybe we'll go in the part of the public hearing process?
It's fine.
Okay, is that all right with this commission? Okay, so, well, that's the, one of the second readings under the, under the general business into the public hearing process. And the first item we have on public hearing is, I've come up to it, there is business license examination, cigarettes are cheaper, and I believe Chief Conrad's going to speak to that?
We do the two bands in that.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I am not exactly sure where you want me to start in terms of going over what we already discussed at the, you haven't kind of rehabbed what got us here, I can do that?
I think, I think it's good for you, because I know there's members of the public who specifically come, come here to this, to take the meeting, and it might be of benefit for them to hear that.
Okay, well, I will kind of go over, go over what got us to this initially, and then I can speak to kind of what's taken place since I last talked to you about this, this issue. And essentially, what happened is, we had a parent come to us after her son had been given a citation for possessing tobacco, and rightfully, she had a question of, okay, my, my son's being held accountable, who's holding accountable the business? Because he told me that he himself purchased the cigarettes at, cigarettes cheaper in Oregon City. So, our, our officers looked into that, they ended up doing a sting at the cigarettes cheaper, they sent an underage juvenile in, and that juvenile was allowed to buy cigarettes, and Tree Trin, who is the owner of cigarettes cheaper, was given a citation for eight hundred and ninety dollars. During this time, this kind of came up on our radar, we're paying a little more attention and looking into the problem, and two of our officers, completely separate occasions, after Mr. Trin had been cited, were found minors in possession of tobacco, and the minor said that they had gotten tobacco from cigarettes cheaper. Now, this is after, like I said, he had been cited. In fact, one of them was after he'd paid the fine, he paid the fine on January fourteenth of two thousand and eleven, and then our school resource officer found a seventeen-year-old boy in possession of chewing tobacco, and he said he bought it the day before at cigarettes cheaper. We did a bunch of background investigation, though, in talking to other kids, not just assuming that just because these kids said that they bought it there, you know, and just at least from the perspective of, of anybody that we get a complaint against, we need to make sure that we're doing our due diligence to make sure they're not getting falsely accused of something. But what we found is that it was widely known amongst teenagers at the high school that anybody generally could, could purchase tobacco products. One kid that we knew of also had bought alcohol a couple of times there, which his parent confirmed, and we even had a debit card history that showed numerous transactions on his actual debit card from cigarettes cheaper. So, we, I spoke to Chief Conrad about it, and we started kind of looking at, what do we do next? We're not getting the, we're not changing behavior here, we were worried about the, the people at cigarettes cheaper getting it, and, and so, we found that the next thing for us to do in consideration of their business license was to bring them out to you and have you consider it. And so, that's why it came to you last time, and we had this discussion, and, and you opted to, to have this hearing, basically with figuring out whether or not they were going to be able to keep their, their license. A few things have taken place since that meeting. I've had a lot of communication in email, over the phone, and in person with Tree Trin, who is, who is sitting here today. And he, you know, at, at kind of the outset of all this, there were two main questions that I think we, as a department, needed to answer. Does the business owner understand the magnitude of the problem, the seriousness of the, the potential risk to the kids that we have here? And, and the other one was, does, does he or she, whoever's the owner here, do they have the capacity to execute some kind of a change and change what has apparently been something that the kids have known for a couple of years? Can they enact changes and then follow through and make sure that this doesn't happen again? Clearly, from speaking to Mr. Trin, I don't think that he quite understood the seriousness of it after he was cited. In speaking to him, my impression now is that he clearly understands the importance of it. And initially, I personally was not completely convinced about how he was going to be able to follow through, and that's some of the conversation I had with him, actually before I spoke to you at the last meeting. Some of the things that he has told me that he's put into place, which I've gone to his store and confirmed, he raised the age there, where he can't buy cigarettes there unless you're nineteen. I tell you, that was not even the law, he did not need to do that, why did you do that? And his, his rationale was that there are students at the high school who are eighteen, and so, if they're eighteen and they're coming into my store, a lot of times, they're going to be with underage kids, and they'll, they'll sell them tobacco. So, he's not only trying to not sell to kids who are underage, but he does not want them even in his store. And so, according to him, his whole idea behind, and it makes sense, and it shows me that he's thinking the right way. He also put a mirror camera in, this is nothing we asked him to do, but he said to record all his transactions in case there was ever some sort of a question, that he would let us review the video. And this was at his expense, we didn't ask him to do this. The one thing he had researched, asking my opinion, he was looking at a card reader, and what that is, is a machine, which I understand cost him about a thousand dollars. You go get this machine, as you can imagine, if you're handed an ID, and it's August fifteenth of nineteen eighty-seven, you're doing this mental math of, how old is that person? So, whoever is running the cash register with this machine can just slide an ID through it, and it tells you how old the person is. And I think it's only going to do that if it's a valid, a valid license, not a fake license. So, we, we had him to put that in place, we told him we thought it'd be a great idea, and I went to the store and confirmed that he had put that in place. We also, on March third, did a sting, sent another juvenile in there, and it was actually Mr. Trin, it was March third at nine thirty a.m., we sent a seventeen-year-old in to purchase a pack of cigarettes, and he was denied the purchase. That's what's happened. So, I, I don't know if you have any questions, I don't know where, you know, I've never had one of these, and I don't, from my understanding, we haven't had one in a long time, so, what's next? I know Mr. Trin, when I spoke to him, was kind of asking me, do I need to speak, what should I say? And I, you know, I said, show up, you know, and I, I know he's, he's willing to speak to you, and...
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, there's a couple of things here. First of all, do you want to go through with the hearing? Secondly, I haven't heard a recommendation, although I've heard through the chief, what I think the, the department is recommending, you might get that, and then decide how, how you want to proceed. It is quasi-judicial, if you do decide it, I'll ask you the usual questions for quasi-judicial hearing.
You do, I know we do have members of the public, I'd like to have them have an opportunity to, to comment, and I think it's only appropriate that, once, you know, Mr. Trin has heard this, that he has an opportunity to respond to it. So, I think maybe what we do, sorry, the commission will do next is actually inviting any members of the public who should speak to this, and I know at least one has come forward.
Can I ask you the magic questions first?
Yeah, well, yes, you may.
Okay. Anybody have any expert contacts on this matter?
The only one I had was a citizen calling today to noticing it was on the agenda, and wondered if they, if it would be appropriate to come and speak, and I suggested that they do, so that was extended.
The only other thing is, has anybody got any predisposition, bias, monetary interest that would prevent them from hearing this fellow? Everybody saying no? Okay.
So, any members of the public who should speak?
For this opportunity, my name is Kathy Martinez, and I am a resident of Oregon City. In fact, when my son was just a little tiny tot seventeen years ago, this was, were his pediatrician. So, I would like to say that I'm not altogether believing that they didn't understand the seriousness of this. I myself put in last year to their business, and just to be fair to them for selling cigarettes, I bought a pack of cigarettes and said to them face to face, I am an adult and I am buying this pack of cigarettes. I know that you have sold tobacco products to minors in the high school here, and if I find out that you've done it again, I personally will go to the police department and handle it that way. Now, I wasn't really nice when I said that, but I did say it, and, and as a parent, I think in this community, it's very, very difficult to raise our kids to be respectful and to be taking good decisions. And it really burns my bridges when we have to worry about businesses in this area that are completely disregarding the rules, and they think they're above the law. And to me, it's kind of a slap in the face to our police department when they don't take these things seriously. If a policeman were to pull me over or say something to me, I would take you awfully seriously. So, and as a business in our community, I think they should do that as well. I don't know who the parents are that came to the police department to talk to them about it, but God bless them for having the guts to do that, because not a lot of parents will stand up. And one of the reasons they won't is because they fear nothing will happen anyway, even if they do. So, I know there's a lot of parents out there that are concerned, I know there's a lot of kids at our high school that their parents are completely unaware that they're even buying tobacco products. It's a huge problem at our high school. I've been involved with kids in this community over the last fifteen years, I was headed up the lunch buddy program for the school district for five years, I've been involved in the Optimist Club working with kids, and I, now I have a son in the high school, and I just stay very involved with our kids. So, it really makes me angry that, that they disregarded what parents have said to them, obviously, I'm not the only parent that has talked with them, that they disregarded what, what you guys said. And it was my understanding, watching the meeting on TV, one of the, the recording of the last meeting, that you had also sent in a second minor after the first one, and he did buy, they did buy cigarettes, that there were two. I think that's what was said on the, on the tape, because my husband and I were both watching it, but, and that's what we understood. But, and I, I am glad that they put in cameras and that they're doing what they can do, but videos can be altered, we all know that, and so, I don't know that that would hold them accountable. And I know that this isn't the biggest problem Oregon City has, but it's a start, and it is something that we can do something about. And for those of you that have been parents and that have tried to raise their children and making right decisions, we don't need this kind of business in Oregon City. I like the direction that Oregon City has been taking, I think we're making steps in the right direction and progress, isn't a step backwards, and I think that needs to be considered.
Okay. Any other members of the public want to speak to this? Mr. Trin, direct the floor?
I feel fine to put a red light on Mr. Trin's hearing. The first question I have is, I understand our ordinance is supposed to be a notification by the city reporter, you didn't get that?
The city reporter is supposed to send out a red notification of the hearing, correct?
As far as I know, nothing was received. As a procedural issue, we're not going to stand on technical here, we're going to have Mr. Trin's presentation as to, and as to sort of accordance, and I think if you finish decently, we're going to see how seriously he does this, and if he's investing a considerable amount of money, he'll go ahead and keep it going. So, with that, thanks. So with that, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Trin, and I'm an owner of Silver Chipper. I used to work, I think, at the commission before. And then my dad gave me some money to open a store. And then after that, I found Silver Chipper in Oregon City, and I bought it about a year ago. It was in April 2010. First of all, I want to apologize for all the problem I have caused and all the time that it caused the city police and as well as your town. I admit that since I take over the business, there isn't any system in place. Or since I'm new, I don't even, I have never had the experience as a clerk before or as a store owner. It's like, and when I first take over, it's like I have to work 15-hour a day and seven-day a week. And sometimes I not adequately check ID. When I first took over, I'll kick about, pan it out a day for coming in without the ID. But then it's keep repeating every day. It's like, it's really, I don't know, and what to do about it. And it's like, sometimes I'm too busy and I'm not paying attention or try to work with something else and everything. And then after I got the citation, and then I got a lot of, that's real where we have, and I got a lot of help from Lieutenant Jim Bin. And he helped me out with like how to put a system in place so this won't ever happen again. And I did everything that Lieutenant Jim Bin recommended me to do. And he listened, you know, to read all of whatever that I did. And all I asked for is another chance to prove that, and I guarantee that this won't happen again in my store. And just like I told Lieutenant Jim Bin, it didn't happen again. I mean, we can do whatever he wants with me or my business. And then I'll invite the police, like I told Jim, whenever he feel like that I'm not complying with the law or something, you can send a kid into my store and see how I did, just to check on myself. Thank you for listening to me.
You know, one of the things we try to do as a police department, one of the most important things we can do is to educate and change behavior. And I think in this case, I sincerely believe that the police department's efforts, that Mr. Trin understands the severity of what he's done. He's gone to great expenses. He seems sincere in what he's done. We have sent minor decoys, and again, if we will or not, he is complying with our request. He did not sell to the minor decoys. So for Martinez, you know, like you, I had a son who graduated Moore City High School, so I certainly understand the severity of selling tobacco products to the youth in our community. But I do believe in this case, we have complied with what we wanted to, and that's we have changed behavior. And my recommendation would be that we don't suspend or revoke the licenses at this time. However, the police department will continue to monitor. We will send in minor decoys periodically, regularly, not every, you know, six months or so. Make sure we are monitoring the products of this. And if the case, if it does turn out that again, a minor sold tobacco products, then I think we can bring this back before you, and I think your decision will be a lot clearer at that time, as to whether you want to suspend or revoke the business licenses.
Well, pleasure, the commission.
Is there anybody else to be heard? Anyone else to be heard?
Is there somebody else to be heard? I'll close the public hearing. I guess I should start out by saying you asked if there are any biases. The vast majority of adult smokers who are addicted to cigarettes started this thing. I've got two children who never did, and two who did, and they're young. The two who did are in their 40s, and they're still smokers. They don't like tobacco smokers, but they're still smokers. It's a serious problem. Sometimes, I guess one of the experiences I had that rotated me a great deal was actually the former school superintendent when we had joint bordinning between the city commission and the school board. And it was brought up, people, obviously, students in school having cigarettes in their front pocket, and brought that up. And he said there were a lot more serious problems that he had to deal with at school. He did not regard that as an important issue. It's an extremely important issue, because that's when people get hooked. The reason was to drug it here that young, because they had laws that covered this. And I don't know if that's a bias or not. You can tell me if that's a bias.
Bias against individual.
That's okay. I'm a little embarrassed to say that when I looked at you, and I didn't know who Mr. Trin was, I assumed that it was your father who was going to be coming up there to speak, and not you, because if I were to say to you anything, I might assume that you were under 18. Obviously, you're not. I don't mean to embarrass you, but that took me back, I must admit. The fact of the vice, and I don't know. I hope you regard this as a very serious problem. It is in our society, it's very, it's most societies, of course it is. We just smoke as common throughout the world. But smoking is, in terms of direct and indirect effects, in terms of not only lung cancer, but heart diseases and so forth, it's one of the number-one killers in our country. And whether billions and billions of dollars go into medical procedures and so forth, dealing with issues that are smoking-related. I hope you recognize that it is a really, really serious issue. And I guess that's my comment at the moment.
My comment would be, you should really thank the Oregon City Police for giving that recommendation, because if they had not given that recommendation, I would have said, "We're pulling the license." So you really need to work with them, please. Not promote two minors, no. That's all I have.
I guess I would say that if in my time, this issue comes out before us again, I would probably strongly incline to revoke the license. Any other commissioners? Anyone else to say? Commissioners to take any action at all on this issue? Mr. Trin?
What you might do is accept the recommendation, the chief in direct, the police to monitor the situation.
I have to say that I did something very bad a couple of commission meetings ago. I seconded a motion. Corey Robinson, I'm going to have that. So to become the mayor, actually, it is almost anything you choose. I'm trying to call the commission. Do I have an ear or motion to add to that?
Some.
Second?
We can't second.
I asked, that was a question. Second, that was a question, I was just meaning the question, I didn't say second. It's the second question mark. Very good. It was moved by Commissioner, by Commissioner, decided by Commissioner Rawb to accept the recommendations by the police chief, which indicated there would be a continuous monitoring of the situation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those both? Well, it looks like you get a second chance. I'd like to take a break, please. This is 835. On the eighth? Yeah, before this, the ordinance number 11-1002 that was be considering. And with that, I saw it. This is, this is, this is a first reading, I think I have to get this here. Or consideration for an ordinance. Is it intended to be a first reading?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And the person that will be speaking to you?
I have a building official here, Mr. Hosey, you can come up and...
Oh, you're speaking for us. I was going to come up here, though.
Leading, honorable mayor, commissioners, Sam Hosey, Chief of Building Safety. Before you have ordinance 11-1002, which is the adoption of the Fire Code of Clay County Fire District Number One. The fire district which Oregon City has adopted the Fire Code. It's based on the Oregon State Fire Code, with primarily administrative amendments to kind of aid in clarifying it and any enforcement activities within the county. With the adoption, it will keep the city consistent with the fire district, provide the fire officials the tools they need to ensure fire safety throughout the community. Stop recommends that you adopt the ordinance. And I would be happy to answer any questions if there are any...
I just had a question. I never expected the ordinance of the district to have come through the city.
The city is independent of the district. We have to adopt the district ordinance, actually, if that's what you're...
It's almost a routine file sort of situation.
Any questions? It is a, it is a public hearing, so I'll open any discussion to this ordinance to the public. So the public hearing is open. Anybody wish to speak to it? Okay, of course, the public hearing. Do you want to take action for first reading?
I just have a question. In section 12, excuse me, 505-1, address identification, if this was to be followed as the letter of the law, I would not be in compliance according to what the city fire department recommended for my home. And I don't know if I'm a unique situation in the city, but this talks about numbers being eligible from the front. And the front of my house isn't on the street that my address is on.
Most of the construction codes, including the Fire Code, they don't go retroactive as long as the time of when it was originally built and constructed. As long as you remain compliant with the codes at that time, and there's been no significant changes, it's not retroactive. And we absolutely recommend it to do that. Again, we want to be able to identify the property quickly. It's not just when there's a smoking, smoldering fire, but with the ordinance, most fire activities are less than. There are periodic activities that constitute the bulk of fires activities. Again, that's not always obvious. And so we're just going to save precious time, shouldn't take a lot. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Any members simply wish you a pretty motion for first reading?
Someone.
Start it.
Okay.
This is ordinance number 11-1002, an ordinance amending Title 15, Buildings in Construction, Chapter 15.40, Fire Code, Section 15.40 of the Oregon City Municipal Code of 1991, and enacting new Title 15, Building in Construction, Chapter 15.40, Fire Code, Section 15.40.
Call the board, please.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Mr. Rawb?
Aye.
Mr. Nacida?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Yes. Motion passes. United States.
Thank you.
We have before us now a second reading of ordinance 11-1001, establishing the Downtown Economic Improvement District. And the report will be by Dan Rettler.
Thank you, Mayor, and numerous of the commission. As we recall, this is the second public hearing on this item. The first public hearing was on February 2nd. And at that time, we had the first reading of the ordinance that creates the Economic Improvement District for downtown Oregon City. This is the second attempt at the district late in 2010. We made a first attempt, and you recall, we had objections in writing that exceeded the statutes, which is 33%. We had more than 33% objecting. This time, we received approximately 11%. So that number has decreased significantly. And now it's up to you to decide if you want to enact the ordinance. Some of the changes from the original ordinance, if you recall, the area has, is a bit smaller. Some of the areas on the fringes of the downtown were removed. The term in the district has been reduced from five to four years. Actually, it'll be a little less than four years, because we're in the middle of a year, calendar year. And I think the other significant change is the fact that if you are in the district, but your building is vacant, you will not be assessed a charge. That's a change from the original.
That's good.
That's a change from the original ordinance. Again, this is a public hearing. We sent out a second notice about this hearing to the public. And the second notice contained what the assessment would be. So this is a chance for people in the proposed district to comment on the assessment, right?
To whom was the notice sent?
All property owners in the proposed district.
But not business owners per se?
Correct. And also, Lloyd Purdy is here. I'm sure you want to make some comments, or just answer questions? All right, okay. All that concludes my comments.
Let me, let me open the mission. Yeah, let me, as our director, I'm assuming the commission first. And I have, well, me, I just, I see one citizen. Let me ask a question. Is there, there's no issue without opening a public hearing on the second reading?
No.
So with that, I'll open the public hearing. And the first person I have listed is Amber Holbeck.
Is it red? Yes, it's red. It's good. It's good. Thank you, Mayor Neely and city commissioners. I'm here. My name is Amber Holbeck, with the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce. And it's my pleasure to share our chamber's support for ordinance number 11-1001, establishing the Downtown Economic Improvement District. Our Board of Directors voted to express its strong support for Main Street Oregon City's effort to establish a Downtown Economic Improvement District. We believe that this effort will, in fact, stabilize funding for this important nonprofit organization that's provided vital leadership to reinvigorate our downtown. As you know already, the city of Oregon City has financially supported Main Street Oregon City during its early efforts. And it now finds the Main Street Oregon City to gain funding sources from those who benefit most from these efforts, the downtown businesses and property owners. While we all acknowledge, especially the chamber acknowledges that the last thing the business person needs right now is another assessment or fee or tax, we recognize that those receiving the most good should play a role in its upkeep. Oregon City cannot afford to lose the momentum generated from the efforts of Main Street Oregon City and downtown manager Lloyd Purdy. We're hopeful that our city commission and our downtown property owners will support this proposed EID to invest in downtown Oregon City and ensure its ongoing efforts. Thank you. Thank you.
I have permission, ma'am, as requested taken. I'll pro義ate that after the closing of the public hearing. But is there anybody else in the public that wants to honor me? I think we can approve a district. It's reported. We have a chance, go ahead and fill out that card. Oh, you did. Okay. If you're leaving, would you reside Oregon City, or even in the district?
Good evening. My name is Laura Rambo, and I live on Wayland Road in Oregon City. I did bring enough copies of a letter that I wrote to you, so perhaps we have that in front of you in support. in support of the economic, um, development improvement district. Uh, please accept this letter that you have before you as a wholehearted endorsement of the work and success of our community's downtown revitalization, revitalization program. Oregon City's downtown program, Main Street Oregon City, is not just improving downtown. It is making the city of Oregon City a better place to live, work, and visit. For two years, the program has operated on a shoestring budget and shown phenomenal success. Oregon City's hundred and sixty-six-year-old downtown is evolving finely into a really modern marketplace. Just to list a few, and this is a short list, thirty-two new businesses added to the marketplace in the last twenty months. It has attracted state funding for more than two point five million for infrastructure improvements. Added three new signature events to the community's festival schedule. We've seen more than one point two million dollars in private investment in downtown buildings with an equal amount planned for this year. The, the creative recruitment program and campaign, Blue Collar Creative, has won both national and state awards. And as I said before, this is just a short list. While not every property owner downtown may want to support the downtown redevelopment program, every property and most business owners downtown have benefited from the work of the nonprofit Main Street Oregon City. Lloyd Purdy and his team of volunteers have built partnerships with everyone from state agencies like ODOT to local organizations like, uh, Three Rivers Artist Guild. This all makes Oregon City a better place to live. There are local programs I truly care about. The Three Rivers Artist Guild has certainly been better off because of the programs that we've developed in coordination with Main Street Oregon City. The city of Oregon City, I feel, needs to continue to support downtown's businesses and encourage you to do everything in your authority to secure long-term funding for this program. Our whole city is better off with a vibrant downtown that supports and encourages creative professionals and creative programs. And I thank you all for your time. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wish to speak? Yes, before.
Rob, do you want to keep your name on seven A or twelve?
No, this, this is fine. Um, Rob Crocker, I'm a downtown, uh, building and business owner. Um, I, I want to, uh, first of all, I'm, I'm excited to be sitting in front of you with, uh, an issue that's a little bit less, um, controversial, I hope. Um, I wanted to point out, uh, first and foremost, that, um, Main Street Oregon City, um, fulfills five of the city's commission goals. Um, all the, basically, three, uh, are fulfilled in part by Main Street Oregon City. It's been an amazing organization. Um, we've had a ton of fantastic momentum that has been paid for by, um, grants from both the city and the county, as well as, um, a handful, and I say handful, meaning literally four, uh, property owners downtown that have, that have contributed on a regular basis to keep Main Street going. Um, Main Street has proven to be very viable. Uh, it's proven to be, um, instrumental in recruiting a lot of attention, a lot of businesses, a lot of positive attention, a lot of new businesses, and a lot of renewed enthusiasm for Oregon City. And, um, it's time for everyone who's been able to benefit from that, um, help out and keep this thing going. Because if it doesn't go, we're gonna lose that momentum. And right now is the time when we can't afford to lose momentum when it comes to Main Street. Um, we've got an awesome thing going, and I encourage, I encourage you, um, to approve the, uh, what is it?
EID.
Yeah, I did. Yeah, but it's a amendment or something. And I, and I think this would go a long way. I know a lot of people, um, on city commissioning all over the city have said how important it, our downtown is to Oregon City. And I think this, this would go a long ways to showing that, um, we all do really care. We can agree to disagree on many other things. But I think, um, almost everyone agrees that downtown Oregon City is a special place. And, uh, Main Street Oregon City really helps to, um, ensure that it's gonna continue to move forward in the right direction.
Thank you.
Establishing the Downtown Economic Improvement District. That's what the ordinance says. Any other comments from the public for this particular, come forth, please.
Did Terry Powers want to speak on item seven A or six C?
Yeah.
Okay.
What if you come forward too? You can start talking, she's just...
Hey, I'm Linda Orson. I'm, uh, one of the founding members of the Main Street Oregon City, and also a founding member of Three Rivers Artist Guild. And instead of repeating what has already been said, um, I just want to say I'm really proud to see the partnership between the Main Street and the arts community come together and make a much more vibrant Main Street and have a lot of activities and bring a lot more businesses to downtown Oregon City. I just want to stress the amount of volunteer hours that have been put into the project. Um, hundreds, if not thousands of hours of volunteer time, which, I don't own a business downtown, but I do have a love of my city. And that's why I give so much of my time to trying to re, redevelop our Main Street Oregon City. And I would urge you strongly to support the EID. Thank you. Thank you.
Go.
I'm not sure how many of you have been in this town long enough to remember some of the things I do. Um, but I remember a very exciting downtown, uh, when I was growing up. And I remember a time when, uh, an apathy and, um, a decay came upon the downtown area. Um, this is not the first attempt at revitalization of our downtown. Uh, we've had a Main Street manager before. We've had efforts to revitalize our downtown before. And they faltered because of lack of funding. So that is my biggest concern tonight, is that we continue the work that started. We've got a tremendous amount of momentum going. Um, let's not lose it by not having the funding. Um, I know that certain concerns have been raised as far as business owners downtown. I am a business owner on Main Street. I contribute financially to the organization. And under the EID scenario, if I were to pay that as part of my right to be building owner, I would pay far less than I do now. I'm okay with that. Either way, I'm okay with that. Um, but let's not lose the momentum by cutting off our funding at this point. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wish to speak? This is the first one. Before the story, Howard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, um, just a couple of thoughts. One, I think the, uh, I'm a building owner and a property owner. Excuse me, a property owner and a business owner downtown. I think the Main Street organization did a good job in bringing this item back to the public, um, in a, in a revived form that is much more acceptable to the property owners and business owners down there. And I, I hope in, uh, downtown business, we can support that. Um, I was listening to the last speaker. I, I went back in my mind in time, and I remember actually writing a crosley, believe it or not, in downtown Oregon City. So I'm beginning to date myself a little bit, but I think I was only about maybe four or five years old. But I hope that, uh, my vision would be someday that that actually could happen again. The, uh, um, but I'm here to really, uh, uh, support this effort, um, to hope that it does continue to receive, uh, support from the downtown community as well as from the city. Um, but also, um, just a pre, a little pre-announcement, maybe, um, we do have a building at Sixth and Main that's been empty for quite a while. And we have a new, I can't name the tenant yet, but I can tell you that we have a new, uh, destination retailer, uh, that will be moving into that building, uh, occupying about three thousand square feet of that building. And that is in our south end. And I'm excited because that will help the south end of Main Street, I think tremendously. And, uh, it does create, uh, a sixth business in the, um, hobby sector, which now begins to be a cluster, which, uh, I'm also excited about. So I think next week, we can actually name who that is. But, uh, I think there's a lot of things going on in downtown and on Main Street. And I, I do hope and share the sentiments of the rest that, that they can continue.
Great.
Any other members of the public want to speak? They just spoke. Before.
Hello. Thank you for the time. My name's, uh, Jerry Burns, relatively new owner of the, uh, Bank of Commerce Building in downtown Oregon City. And I can tell you, I probably would not be in this position if it would, if it wasn't for the efforts of, uh, the Main Street Oregon City Group. Uh, at this point, I have not been one of the four business owners involved. And I feel like it's time for me as a, a business owner, an employer, and a property owner, uh, to pay my fair share. And whatever that is, uh, we're willing to do it. We see the improvements since we've owned the, the building downtown. And can't imagine where we would be at as property owners or employers without their efforts. So, look forward good and continue.
Well, thank you very much. And, uh, I'm, I'm glad to see ownership of that building is in your hands and willing to participate in this. And that's one of the buildings that really represents market history that we've lost some of in, in, in the district.
Well, and I, I can tell you, we're going through, uh, uh, an assessment right now of improving the facade of the building. And, uh, we would not be as excited on that project if it weren't for this group.
All right.
Well, thank you very much. A really important building here. Uh, any other members of the public wish to speak? That our close the public hearing, we can have some commission dialogue, and I do have Commissioner Mom, Commissioner State.
Okay, my, my question was kind of a voice, so if you wouldn't mind coming up, that'd be great. Um, um, there was a couple of, um, people that said they were not interested in participating. Do you have an idea, you know, just kind of a, any idea what that would be?
Sure, Commissioner Mom. Uh, you all can hear me all right? I have Lloyd Purdy, I represent the downtown Oregon City. Um, Dan, can you tell them what the current objection rate is? Is it time to...
Yeah, it's, uh, uh, ten point seven three percent.
So it's very small.
Very small. Um, I do have the letters of objection that we perceived, uh, here.
Yeah.
Um, objection rates are, uh, objections, uh, include comments like, um, well, this is one property owner stating, we need, we need help educating and connecting our, our property owners, uh, and, uh, help re, recruiting and advertising, uh, not just doing event production. A good comment, uh, that's probably what we're trying to do with this funding, is develop that next step for downtown. So there's some concerns, certain phrases on this first letter that aren't quite objections, they're just kind of a wish list.
The couple that we received, they just said, we don't want it. They didn't give us an explanation as to why.
Right.
So it's good that they wrote it down for you so you can address those issues.
When, when we do have an objection, it tends to, um, here's one. It's my opinion that all taxpayers in the state should be participating in the EID. Uh, the city has been a good partner, and I think will continue to be a partner in some level to what we're doing. Um, as our first speaker mentioned, it's time probably for all the properties who are directly benefiting and the business owners to cover their share.
That's great. I just kind of wanted to know if you had an idea. Thank you.
Any, any other questions that, uh, Lloyd Purdy sets out? Your James and Sid.
Um, we have a couple of comments, um, well, a number of comments. I, um, think that Main Street Oregon City has established, uh, a very excellent reputation metro-wide and has achieved a lot of, um, really good things. And, um, the board and Lloyd have received due recognition for that. And I share in that recognition and appreciation, um, particularly the volunteer work, um, as a volunteer in this position. Um, I can sympathize, empathize with people who spend a lot of, uh, volunteer time. Um, um, that said, I, I have some concerns about this EID that have crystallized, um, recently. And, um, I guess, maybe crystallized when, when I asked, uh, Mr. Grandlaw, who had been notified of this tonight. Um, I have spent a fair amount of time walking up and down Main Street, talking with people and business owners, and, um, have received some folks' concerns. Um, I'll give examples, um, of a restaurant owner who was very concerned that the increased assessment on the property owners was going to be passed on, um, to tenants through higher rents. Um, and then when you're running a restaurant business, you operate on extremely thin margins. And that they didn't know whether, um, um, based on the increased cost of food, like increased cost of energy, they really could afford, um, the possibility or the probability of increased rent from, um, special assessment on the owner of their property, and that might be passed along to them. Um, that's one example of, um, um, a concern I, um, have expressed. And the fact that that net owner or that business owner and that restaurant owner, um, like any other tenant downtown, would not have received notice of the public hearing is, is really, really truly concerning to me. Um, that's one concern. There are a couple of other concerns I have, um, and this, and this goes back into my past history, um, before I moved to Oregon. Um, in the nature of this organization, a five oh one C three, um, organization that actually does engage in a planning function for downtown Oregon City, um, and, um, is not subject, for example, to public records laws, um, even though it's engaging in a, in a, you know, in a planning function that affects how taxpayer funds are spent, how city policy is, is set. And, um, I think that can be a problem. Um, and I, I, I have a concern about representation, um, of people who are going to be affected by that, um, and, and don't have, um, you know, a, a really effective accountability, accountability procedure either through electing the board, um, or through being able to acquire information through Public Records Act. Um, and it, 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 it concerns me. Um, a couple of recent events that have taken place, um, concern me. Um, the recent flyer that Main Street Oregon, Oregon, Oregon City produced, um, uh, publicizing, um, property that it did not own, including two pieces of property, um, owned by the city's urban, uh, public urban rental agency. Um, that was a concern to me and, and other members of the commission. So, um, given the weight of those concerns, I don't think I can support this EID tonight as it stands. Um, I certainly can't support it without having, um, had everybody who is potentially subject to a rental increase, um, be noticed to be able to come and speak their mind, um, at a public hearing like this. And when we're talking about, I mean, Main Street Oregon City has operated on grants, which is great, um, that it's been doing that. But when it's going to start relying on the special assessment powers of the city of Oregon City as a municipality, it changes the, the very nature and dynamic, um, of accountability. And the fact that we are raising through the taxing power money for a nonprofit agency, um, five oh one C three organization that is not subject to public records law or direct representation, um, uh, I have a problem with that. So, um, um, at the very least, I think this, um, hearing should be continued. Um, and notice, we've done that in the past, for example, with the Act of the Central District, where there was some property that was owned adjacent to an alley that was, uh, that were not notified at the hearing. And we adjourned at the hearing so that they could be notified. Um, and, um, I'm not prepared to vote on this, um, positively, um, tonight, especially when, um, a large number of people are gonna be impacted, um, indirectly and directly by this ordinance, um, have been not, have not been notified of the possibility to come and speak their minds and address the concerns.
Um, I'll take, I'll take, uh, you know, a, a, a lot of the commissioners speak first, and, uh, both sitting here, um, so I'll, I'll be first to speak. The one, one thing I, the only comment I'll make regarding that is the, uh, concerns about two of the city properties put, put on the flyer. Indeed, concerns were expressed, uh, about that. I invited the commission as a whole to take action to change that flyer, which was suggested, uh, that one of the commissions, that, that flyer be changed. Uh, the, there was no motion put forward. There's no second to that motion put forward. No actions taken by the commission. Since I brought that up, I'm just going to say that we do have an, uh, uh, we do have two pieces of property we wish to market. Uh, Main Street, uh, actually, uh, took picture, uh, put forward pictures of those two pieces of property with, uh, the kinds of designs that were actually put forward to us, I believe. with kinds of designs that were actually put forward to us, I believe, at one time. This possibility is that we were supposed to come forward to the Urban Municipal Commission. And if the city is going to market things, that's fine, but it has not been successful in marketing anything. And I was rather pleased that the Main Street was taking action that we have failed to do. And so, I don't think it's fair to criticize Main Street for doing that, and they are in fact our partner. We wouldn't sell the property if we didn't want to, after somebody came forward, and I can think that was a very big issue at the time. Some of the other concerns there, if there's a basis for continuance, that's fine, we could take that as a motion. Any other comments on the part of any of the commissioners? I know the city manager wants to make a comment.
Okay.
Yes, please. I've lost it, if you have it on me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd like to ask Dan, when we talk like a 10.1% percent, exactly what is that and how that's figured?
That represents assessed value of the area in the district.
That?
That number, that percentage. So, it's a percentage of the property owners, their assessed value, that in the district.
Do you have a number that are, have, not, people that are for this? So, what, so, you know, are you basing only 10% objected and only 10% said they were for it? We don't have a lot to show there.
The way the ordinance is written is that, it's written in sort of a negative form. It says that you can, you can create the district as long as you don't receive objections that total more than 33% of the assessed value. And we put out notice, and Lloyd has several work sessions with, including business owners. And so, the information got out there, and we, and the written opposition we received is 10.7%.
Okay, and my second part of the question is, how are the members chosen for the EID board or the Main Street board?
I don't, Lloyd, I dropped the microphone. And I guess I want to add to Dan's response on the first question, and Commissioner Robby weren't on the commission then last year when we formed this. We're very clearly following state and local statute on how to form an EID. State law says, and please do correct me if I'm wrong, but state law says, you report of forming an EID if fewer than 33% of your property owners buy value, do not object. That's for six months now, we've been working on it, that's the standard we've been working under, is what state says we can do. So, the board of directors for Main Street Oregon City are a cross-representation, as you know, because you skimmed some of our games, a cross-representation of community stakeholders. Our board has room for, I think, two business owners, two property owners, two large employers, a city representative, somebody from the chamber, somebody from the arts community, somebody from the historic community, a representative of the historic community, representative of the tourism and heritage industry. We may have an ad hoc position that would encompass a local resident. So, it's a cross-representational board, because it takes a whole city to raise a downtown, or redevelop a downtown. Members are, when spots come open, for instance, right now, we have two open spots for large employers, so we're currently seeking to fill two spots, but we have to fill spots based on what our bylaws say we can fill, for instance.
So, it's not election, it's appointment?
It's a, yeah, there's no, there's no, as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, there's no body politic for us. So, usually, it's a review process. We look at credentials, responses, commitments to downtown. So, we have a process in place for fielding new members. Our biggest hangup is we only have so much availability at any given time, because we have to fill specific spots by our charter.
You have bylaws that cover the membership, though?
But as a 501(c)(3), we're not a membership organization. We've worked pretty good at the Tulsa City. You know, I don't go home at the end of the day thinking, we've just made downtown better, I, so, language right there.
Well, I guess, you have certain positions that are available to certain representation, unless we're not speaking.
Right.
And that is a formal, that is a, I don't know, but it is a form.
We have a formal process for inviting new board members to become candidates, and then actually seated on the board.
Is there a term limit to that?
Yeah, there is. We started out with, we started, we ended up rotating terms, so, I mean, it's a very typical standard, federal IRS-approved 501(c)(3) process, both federal and state-recognized.
Okay, thank you.
Since some people mentioned comments that I heard, I had two business owners that talked to me, but that in fact voted against them. One was, has had a business, family business in here for many, many years, and his objection is that he was part of the prior effort to revitalize, and he said, we didn't have any papers at that particular time, I don't know why we needed papers at this particular time, as was pointed out, it wasn't too successful. The other person, the other person actually, in that particular business, it was a property owner business thing, it was, the other individual was also, the business owner owned the property, and he came forward to me and said, it really affected the shrinking of the district, so their votes didn't count as much. He said that he wanted to sell his building, and was afraid this might impact his ability to sell it. So, I just thought I'd disclose that in terms of two people that come forward to me on the street. I'll say it's, as far as I'm sure, yeah, even by support.
Crawford, yeah, a business and building owner downtown, and I think, Commissioner Smith was probably referencing Me Familiar Restaurant, being concerned about rent increases. I happen to be-
Now, for the record, it was not.
It wasn't Me Familiar.
Okay, great.
So, for the record, I'll go ahead and state that as a property owner downtown, we do have two restaurants, actually, in some of our buildings, and my partner and I have not only no intent to raise because of this, the amount of money that we will pay on this is so insignificant, there's no reason for us to pass that to our tenants. We have, and I think most property owners here will send you, there are automatic, in most contracts, most leases, there are generally a standard 3% increase for the account for inflation, and we would absorb that. As well, I will tell you that Me Familiar, and if it wasn't Me Familiar, that's fine, that you can talk to them, but I just had dinner with Me Familiar tonight, and I talked to one of the owners, Kyle Bradfield, and he told me to tell you guys that he's in support of Main Street. So, if it wasn't Me Familiar, that's great, but you do have one restaurant that's on board, and plus, they're locked in for seven year lease, and we can't touch the lease anyway, so it's going to be a while. And what restaurants or any businesses downtown are going to see from the efforts of Main Street are such an increase in business that's going to far outweigh any, any potential. You've got to remember, $1,950 is the max, and most buildings don't even come close to that downtown. So, if we're talking a thousand bucks, that's less than 100 bucks a month, and most buildings have more than one business in them. So, you're talking maybe 25, 30, 50 bucks a month, which frankly, from the opinion of the people who are already donating to Main Street, those businesses should be helping out anyway. This is just a way for us to make sure that everybody's on board, everybody's benefiting from this. Obviously, the building owners are more so than the businesses, because the property values increase with more business and more, more activity downtown. So, the property owners are shouldering the burden if they want to pass it through to their, to the businesses, that obviously they can, but that has to be negotiated, and you can't do that in the middle of the lease, so.
Right.
And I don't have anything more to say with that, I see many.
Commissioner, I pay more per month for this dismal right here that I loathe than most folks are going to pay for their EID. I've been trying to encourage downtowns in every state and every city where I've been a city manager to try to do something like this. And I'm just really proud, I don't want to get on the Lloyd bandwagon, because I'm afraid he's hesitant, but he's done a remarkable, it's a remarkable job. And one of the things I want to say, besides that, I'm very, very proud of his board and the volunteers that's been mentioned, and the business owners that stepped up in spite of recession, in spite of the inclination for us, we're all, you know, we're wired for fear, that's, we're human, that's one of the things we do. So, for those folks to step up, I'm just so darn proud of our business community for what they're, what they're doing in their downtown. And I want to say one more thing in support of this, and also as sort of edification for our two newest commission members. I remember sitting here about four months ago, five months ago, right, before, or right after the election, maybe it was, and we had the first run at this. And we had, it was over 35% objection there, and so, the statutory threshold is 33. And I remember this commission having a discussion, Commissioner Smith was especially vocal during that discussion, and mentioned something like, it would really be nice if we could come in around 27, 28% objection. 10.7?
Okay.
I don't know who did it, I don't know how it happened, I'm just grateful that it happened. That exceeds my expectations by at least double. All I can say is, way to go, guys.
I think one of the reasons it happened, but it's okay, I mean, they cut out, they cut out portions of the area that really, you're probably going to benefit at least from the Main Street Act.
But, but the Main Street folks and our staff and Lloyd worked together, at the commission's suggestion, to go out and do what you suggested that we did. And we did it, and did it better, and I say we, but I had very little to do with this. But it's just a great accomplishment. And then the next, the last thing I want to mention, this just kind of goes to Commissioner and the seat of concern about the taxation issue, and Lloyd saying the city gets a little bit, a little bit is actually a little bigger, I would probably put the glass about this, it's not this much, but it's not this much. And it's a roughly $50,000 a year that we put into the program already, and we are not going to, in this next budget that I'll be proposing to you at the end of the month, we will not be recommending that to be reduced. We're going to continue that commitment. So, the amount of taxation, we do put tax money in, those people are represented by you folks through the budget process, it's state law, so there is some connection there democratically to how we're spending the money. And I just hope that we can continue the partnership that's been fantastic, and I'm really proud of our group.
I'm going to go ahead and put a mark on forward to continue this hearing to the first meeting of the city commission in April, and to have everybody who has not been noticed, who owns a business license within the proposed EID, be sent a notice for that meeting.
I hear a second. Hang on a second. I hear this motion.
I want to move that we do the second reading on ordinance number 11-1001.
I hear a second.
Final adoption.
So, what is number, motion made by, sorry, Commissioner Mum is seconded by Commissioner Ra.
Yes. This is 11-1001, an ordinance of the city, where the city creating the downtown economic improvement district.
Hold on, please.
Commissioner Mum?
Yes.
Commissioner Ra?
Yes.
Commissioner Hesita?
No.
Mayor Neely?
I need a timer.
Yes. We had a request, and I didn't bring it forward because it closed the public hearing, but you might have the opportunity to legitimately justify one of the other things that we have coming up. That was Lyndale. For that, I got to get back on to my agenda, find out what I'm supposed to be talking about. Okay. Our third item, and we're going to have four items, so our third item here is the, this is the second reading of ordinance. Yes, it's the second reading of ordinance, the manual chapter 504 of the Oregon City Municipal Code, related to a business license, and we've got a report.
I think you're on 7A, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, how did we get on with it? Resolution 1108 establishes assessment rate for an economic improvement district, and maybe Lyndale left, she could, maybe you can put in your profile on this one, too. Yeah, anyway, we'll get the commission report first.
Thank you, Mayor. This is more procedural than anything, you're taking the big step, which is approval of the ordinance. This is a resolution, and the staff's recommending you authorize the mayor to sign the resolution. And what it does is establishes some findings, including the fact that we conducted a public hearing today on March 16th, we did not receive more than 33% of the property owners within the boundaries of the EID in terms of opposition. And it also states that the city will send invoices to property owners beginning on May 1st, 2011, and assessment payments will be due later than May 31st, 2011. And that's all, that's my opinion.
The confusion was, I think we took 7C and put it under the public agenda, that's what I was trying to get forward, and that didn't happen, but we'll continue with our second reading of ordinance 10415 on general business, since somehow it did get reorganized. So, with that, what action do you need?
Well, this action is just a resolution.
Yeah.
And so, we need a vote from the commission to authorize you to sign the resolution.
Well, I guess I'll have to be reoriented here, because we did carry the other one forward, and then come into the public, into the public hearing. Well, Lyndale's come up, and it is a related activity, and you're free to speak.
I want to get you off the chair.
I did it on my own.
I'm Lyndale, I am a resident of West Lynn, but I am the owner of Waynona Studios at 719 Main Street in downtown Oregon City. I just wanted to say that, that I appreciate all of the effort and consideration you've given to this, but I did want to clarify that it was not hard for me as a business owner to know that there was an opportunity to come tonight and to speak to this issue if I chose to do so. And to not receive a formal, whether from the city, as I don't think that was required, but there was standard of communication from Main Street and from property owners and other people also, it was not a secret, that I would be welcome here tonight, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
So, I read the resolution. I don't have to read, so I get all these words as I can do this. No, that's fine. We've got, how many sections here on this resolution? I'm trying to get this, two? Go ahead.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
I was going to quote the sections, but that's all right.
I make a motion that we have Mayor Neely assigned the resolution number 1108 to establish a assessment rate for economic improvement district.
I hear a second.
Second.
It's basically adopting the resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Motion made, all right. Commissioner Mum seconded by Commissioner Ra. Hold on, please.
Commissioner Mum?
Yes.
Commissioner Ra?
Aye.
Commissioner Hesita?
No.
Mayor Neely?
Yes.
There you go, that. We'll go on to, there you go. We'll go on to 7B, 7C is no longer in our public hearings, we'll come from that in the second reading in a moment. The city rules of procedure, and Nancy, you're going to speak for this?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind the commission that from your goal-setting, we made a couple of changes to this, if I say goal-setting, it was the night that you had your last goal-setting session, we made the changes that the commission recommended, and we also took out a redundancy in the first one, that first paragraph that you see the deadline in regarding the mayor's authority, because it was already stated, and all we did by having that extra sentence would just make it more confusing, so we took that.
You're giving me more power. They're giving you more power, but, but...
No, it's, it's like it was. We're just not saying it.
They're not giving you veto power.
So with that, we do recommend that, uh, most of your rules, so I, I think we might recommend, uh, but there it is in this form, as you requested.
Do I hear a motion?
Uh, no, I have a discussion item.
Okay.
Uh, in section five A.
Five A?
Yes. Uh, let's see. You tend to, um, let's keep going. The mayor may change the order of the business and add or delete items.
That's true.
It's still there.
Oh, that's true.
I'm thinking we need to take care of that because it needs...
What page is it on? I'm sorry.
Uh, page six.
Section five A. It is the one sentence.
Right.
Well, that's the powers I was due. I'm sorry, it shouldn't be in there because the charter gives me no such authority. It gives me authority to set the order of agenda and that's it.
Right.
And we, we agreed to have that pulled. I'm sorry, I just said.
We'll, we'll make that correction.
Good catch.
You want to put, you want to put forward a motion?
I'll give it, I understand. Okay.
Commissioner, you want to...
I'll put first the motion, you set it in the...
Yes, that's right.
I'll second.
Uh, Commissioner Ra has made the motion and, and Commissioner, uh, Mum has seconded.
It's as corrected by the red line, the additional red line of the removal of the fourth sentence in five A.
Yes.
Removal of the mayor may change that one.
Correct.
So that will be deleted?
Yeah.
Yeah, deleted, under the motion.
Okay.
Now, that was the, that request. In fact, that was the thing I seconded, I wasn't supposed to second. Maybe they didn't do it because I illegally seconded the motion. That's all right. Hold call?
Commissioner Mum?
Yes.
Commissioner Ra?
Aye.
Commissioner Hasida?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Yes.
Motion approved, we can answer. And, uh, we'll do the second reading of, um, ordinance number ten, ten fourteen, amending chapter five oh four of the Oregon City Municipal Code related to business licenses.
Mayor Neely and commission, uh, were, staff recommends your, uh, approval of the second reading or adoption of, of the said ordinance. Uh, this amends chapter five point oh four of the Oregon City Municipal Code related to our, uh, business licensing. Um, the, uh, commission approved the first reading back in December, uh, of two thousand and ten, so this, this past December. Um, the, the timeline here was based on, uh, the feedback at that time that, uh, the commission had requested, uh, that we go forth and, um, reach out to the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce and, uh, engage them, uh, further into the conversation, um, by an oversight. We hadn't done that. Uh, we've done that. We've met with, uh, the government Economic Affairs Board, is that how you say that? Committee or, uh, subcommittee of the chamber? And then, um, the, uh, the full board of the chamber also reviewed this, uh, the ordinance change in our business licensing practice and, uh, we received a full report of the chamber on, on this matter. So that, um, has occurred since the last reading and, um, and so we are, uh, we feel that we're prepared to, to implement this, this ordinance.
This is the second reading. We can open the discussion into public comment. If anybody's interested. Amber?
Mayor Neely and city commissioners, I'm here once again representing the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce. My name is Amber Holvik and I am the executive director. Uh, it is, uh, my ple, my pleasure to represent the chamber in sharing our support for this particular ordinance change. And, uh, we ensure support for the proposed changes to Oregon City's Municipal Code related to business licenses. I will tell you, we have carefully, very carefully reviewed the recommendations and have thoroughly debated these proposed changes twice. In our newsletters to our members, we've shared a summary of the proposed changes. Um, and then we've also included that on our website, which is then available to a broader public, of course. Um, we studied the changes and processed in committee and lastly sought, sought the support of these efforts through our board of directors. And as the local voice of business, we recognize our need to be present in these kinds of matters that affect existing businesses and future businesses alike. The understandable changes recommended to this ordinance, especially those relating to the efficiencies and internal processes at City Hall. Additionally, we believe the fee increases are prudent and within competitive range of nearby communities. Uh, the business community understands the need to ensure that programs like this be self-sufficient or at the very least not burdensome to the municipality, i.e. the city of Oregon City. And, and thusly, of course, we don't want them to be burdensome to the business community. Um, I also understand that, uh, at least three of the recommendations from the original report, um, were pulled out. I appreciate that, city commissioners, for pulling those out, uh, in the earlier process. Uh, and, and our chamber concurs with, with the removal of those particular items. Um, in closing, we appreciate, um, the opportunity to weigh in on this item and further appreciate the city staff's willingness to hear our concerns, um, that were previously shared. On a side note, it's still related, um, the chamber just wants to share with you folks, um, both staff and the commission, that we really want to be an active partner in the future, um, for related efforts. Uh, we respectfully request to be part of the process from the beginning when business license code is reviewed in the future. Uh, and welcome to future dialogue regarding the purpose of business licensing, compliance efforts, and greater revenue generation opportunities for the city. And as a testament to our, uh, cooperative efforts, uh, with the city and between, between the city and the chamber, uh, we're pleased that individuals from our business community are meeting regularly with city staff to brainstorm on ways to encourage and promote an atmosphere of business friendliness, um, and frankly, effectiveness here in Oregon City. So, uh, that's all I have to share and, uh, we urge your passage of this ordinance change.
Any more comments from the public? Here I am, I'm going to, uh, Commissioner, input, uh, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. I did have some questions and I did email Scott, um, so he had a chance to kind of look over my questions. Um, were you able to, one of my questions was, um, on page six, it talks about city liability. Um, is there truly a city liability and is there something that we should be addressing?
Uh, Commissioner Mum, uh, let's see, liability? Uh, the, the liability is referring to, um, the, the potential and it's, uh, in, in Mr., in our, um, finance director, Mr. Wimmer's own words, it's the never ending possibility of fraud when humans are involved. And, and that's just something that we have to deal with. Uh, separation of duties is always concerned. Uh, it's especially challenging when there are a number, a limited number of people perform a lot of duties. Uh, so we're constantly looking, uh, looking at that and, uh, Mr. Wimmer keeps an eye on numbers for, uh, looking at unusual fluctuations. Um, we have our outside independent audits every year and the audits look at our controls and they've never raised any such concerns, so...
So we're good?
We're, we're good. It's just a, it's just a general concern related to that type of...
Okay. Okay, then, um, what was, um, let's see. I have a couple of other ones. Um, was the software program ever fixed? Is it?
Basically, those were just some internal pushes that were worked on.
So they're all done?
Yes.
So they're done? And then were you ever able to figure out kind of like, um, what has the Business Development Fund funded?
I think I probably want to call on Mr. Wimmer to talk to that because he's got much, uh, much more, much more experience with that.
What does it do, I guess?
Mayor, commissioners, this, you didn't all get this, uh, referred to. Basically, that Business License Development Fund was created in two thousand and two when the chamber came and asked the city to increase their business license by fifty percent and put half of that fifty percent into the Business License Development Fund. And so that's what we did and, um, for several years, we didn't really spend any of that money. It amounts to about thirty-five thousand dollars a year that goes into there. Um, anyway, well, we, this, about, about two thousand and eight, we started spending like fifty thousand dollars a year for the downtown program we were just talking about with Lloyd. We supported, uh, farmers market every year, the ten or fifteen thousand dollars. This year, we did thirty-five thousand dollars to support economic development program. But in doing all that, we've been spending a lot more than we've been bringing in, so we're, we don't have the two hundred thousand dollars we used to. We're down to about sixty or eighty thousand dollars, fun dollars each year.
Okay.
For this coming year, we're going to propose in the budget, David said, for fifty thousand dollars for the downtown still and, uh, ten thousand for the, I think the locks program that the, one of the, Paul, 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 Paul.
One thousand.
Well, the ten thousand, we're putting in for the, uh, Paul's hearties.
Oh, okay. So that's where, that's where that came from?
Right, right, right.
Okay, okay. I guess.
And, and in the first years, it actually sent you and the executive director off to conference. And went in with it for the first few years to send the chamber director and the CEO to a conference.
Okay.
So, yeah, like I said, every year, you get about thirty-five thousand dollars into that, about five thousand, that comes from the metro business license and the other thirties from local business licenses.
Okay, well, that's great. Thank you. I just didn't quite get that, so thank you.
I just want to remind the commission, or new commissioners, this was a holdover goal that I think our other previous commission had, took us a little longer to get there than we wanted to and, uh, but we did get there.
Well, I think it's long overdue and I want to thank everybody that's worked on it. It's, it's great.
I, I have another question. Does, does Commissioner Smith know about the three dollar fee for services and signables and musical and theatrical?
He's not here, so...
That's a big question.
I didn't put that to him.
Yeah.
He's free to make a bargain donation.
Um, it was probably a term that William Phipper has something to say on, you ready?
Mr. Mayor and City Commissioner, my name is William Gifford and I live in Oregon City. And I just have a question as I was browsing through this regarding enforcement, which is, uh, um, something I'm not quite clear about, although it looks like it has some, uh, some good procedures in there, but it doesn't really say what happens to those folks that are not complying. And so this is a thirty day, six day, and, and then enforcement slash court immediately following a ninety day mark, et cetera. But could somebody explain that process?
There's a process for any ordinance violation, that's in the general section elsewhere, that you go to court, you're subject to penalties or graduating issue.
Dependent upon what? Uh, the grievousness of the defense or?
Yes. Basically, and whether it's repeating.
That's already articulated in other places.
Yes, it's in the general ordinance violations.
And so may, I was just suggesting, you know, it might have been interesting to have some reference in here as to, rather than assume that the person reading this would know that there is that provision.
That's the way it's done throughout the code.
Oh, that's the way it's done. Well, that's the way it's done. That's, that's the way it's done. Okay.
This is definitely how it is referenced on there. If you may swear that, maybe in such a, I did want to make a comment. Uh, once you request staff, I sent, I'm guilty, I sent my business license fee in late. They returned it to me and said I owed them another forty dollars. I preferred that they would have actually kept the money and I owed the forty dollars. So by now I haven't paid anything and that ninety day thing might be coming on me very quickly, so I have to take some action. My question is, if I paid the licensee, I was against the staff accept the licensee and then charge me the forty dollars rather than sending me back the check that I sent. You might look at that. But I mean, I, I've had, I've had lengthy before, but they've never done that. They never sent back my original check.
The clerical staff aren't here.
No, no, I, I would go with some question, no, I'm just making a suggestion because the opportunity came forward.
Okay.
Well, I thought I'd say that before that ninety day thing kicks in, too. Okay. Do I, uh, do I hear a motion? And, and let me make a comment. We've been really lax over, for this for some years. You do a second reading, we say second reading of the motion and final adoption that actually puts the ordinance into effect. So when you do a second reading, try to remember to include and final adoption after you said the ordinance number.
So moved with the ordinance number ten dash ten fourteen.
And final adoption.
And final adoption.
Hopefully, you heard that. I said, 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 I
Um, I would like to remind the commission that while you will be the contracting body, the funding is, uh, for this phase of the project is coming from the Jobs and Transportation Act that was adopted by the two thousand nine state legislature, and, um, designated twenty-two million dollars from state funding, gas tax, and, um, vehicle registration fees, um, for the jug handle project. But as part of that, the money is, we enter the contract, and then the state reimburses us for the money within, I think it's fifteen or thirty days after we, um, send out invoices, so it's a quick turnaround. And the other interesting thing about this project is, previous to the J T A funding, um, we have used, I wanted to just take a moment for you to, uh, thank the federal government at the time, it was Harlan Hooly, but at this point, it would be Kurt Schrader, that these are congresspeople that had, um, provided appropriations and authorization funds to move the project through the preliminary engineering stages. And, um, the other funding source we've been using for this project to get it to final design is when Clackamas County moved up to red soils, they have a transportation impact fee as part of their development that has gone towards improvements on Highway two thirteen. And I thought it just, that'd be information for you. And the other interesting thing about this is that, uh, pre, uh, in two thousand ten, you passed a resolution that, um, allowed us to not do the traditional public contracting process, and it authorized us to do the press, the price, which is low bid, plus qualifications, plus technical best value alternative contracting, so it's called A plus C plus D method in the Oregon revised statutes. And, um, I would report to you that that process was very successful in this, um, bid, uh, process, and the contractor, Moott, actually ended up with the low bid as well as having the, um, scored piles of the five submittals in the, um, C plus D, which is the, um, technical approach and best value alternative contracting. So it was a very interesting process we went through, I think that it was a very comprehensive and great process for this type of a project, to, um, make sure you're getting a contractor that can really deliver, where we have very significant concerns about, um, impacts to the public throughout the construction of this project, and we're using some unique bridge construction methods, and, um, it has the potential of impacting thousands and thousands of people out there every day. So I'm pleased to, um, announce that Moott was a successful bid around this project.
Do, I think the mission, I'm gonna sit, I'm gonna, I had Jill Long wish you to speak for this.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name's Jill Long, I'm an attorney with Lane Powell in Portland, Oregon, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Home Depot. Um, we just wanted to take this opportunity to speak to the commission about the jug handle project, and instead, by thanking Nancy Kraschauer and her staff, in particular, Alita, Franklin Goodrich, she's been working with very closely as the project's been moving forward. Um, as Nancy mentioned, this obviously is gonna have a huge impact on a lot of citizens in Oregon City, and in particular, on the Home Depot's business. Obviously, they're probably, uh, one of the most impacted stakeholders, having the large business right next to the construction area. Um, and so we felt tonight, on the night of awarding the bid, would be a good time just to talk a little bit about what we've been discussing with city staff, um, they've been great working with us, listening to the concerns, and talking about ways we can minimize the impact. Sort of feeling things in the project that could be minimized some for Home Depot. The first one is the four-day road closure, I'm sure you're all familiar with the fact that, you know, the rapid bridge construction is gonna require a full closure of the road. Uh, you know, Home Depot would rather that not be the case, but recognizing that it is. A volume occurs, and the time of year that occurs can really change how big of a financial impact it has on Home Depot. Uh, we've communicated that it would be best during the week, and we know that's not also a possibility, uh, 'cause traffic numbers are, are much higher, but in terms of a four-day closure over a weekend, uh, we understand that the contractor's gonna have a choice between a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday closure versus a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday closure. Uh, it might be a little counterintuitive, but Home Depot would much prefer for the closure not to occur on a Monday and have that Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday closure. The reason for that is we do a lot of, uh, business at the pro desk, where the contractors come, and that's typically high volume on a Monday, so staff is well aware of this, we've been working with them, but we know the contractor's obviously gonna have a large part in setting that schedule, so we wanted to, to voice that. Uh, secondly, we know there's gonna be some evening closures, and those evening closures, we understand will probably be done ahead of time, and Home Depot's considering whether or not if there's gonna be full rain closures in the evening, if they want to be flexible maybe with their store hours and sort of reflect or work with that. So we look forward to some great communication with the contractor, and a lot of warning to the extent possible about when those things are gonna occur, so that Home Depot can take all the steps that are possible for the store to take to help minimize the impact there as well. Similarly, with directional signage, when there is movement, you know, obviously, there's gonna be a lot of movement of cars in different directions, we just wanna work closely with the contractor there and with the city to add directional signage as needed, so we know the customers can find, uh, the Home Depot. Uh, and honestly, in terms of time of year, sort of for, for all of this, but particularly for the four-day closure, um, as I'm sure some of you who are doing your sofas know that, you know, late spring, summer, early fall are big, big times of volume sales for, for the Home Depot, and we'd love to see some of the bigger impact things, especially the four-day closure, occur in the winter, excuse me, the winter months, not the holiday season, but the winter months, uh, if possible, and, and the feedback we've gotten so far is, that's probably a possibility, it's sort of what it's set for now, but we know with the contractor coming on board, you know, that's gonna be something that's looked at, so. Um, we just look forward to more cooperation with the city, uh, thank staff again for all their help so far, and we look forward to the grand opening, which I know the Home Depot's gonna be hosting, and we're looking at staff right now on that, so. If there's any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'm glad you're here.
Yes, thank you very much. Are there any questions?
I might just add that, that the groundbreaking ceremony will be on May fifth. Oh, and, um, the, there will be a reception at twelve thirty, and then the programs start at one P M. And yes, we are working with Home Depot, thank you very much, and, um, we, so far, we're, um, confident and pleased to announce that, um, Governor Pittsburgh will be attending the groundbreaking and giving, um, giving, um, I don't think you'd wanna call it a speech, but anyway, giving some remarks, thank you.
And I should say, we're not really hosting it, we're just providing a parking lot, I believe, but we're happy to do that.
It's great to be able to work with you, and, um, yeah.
We will sell you the shower door, actually.
Thank you very much, thank you very much.
Um, Mr. Hickford, would, uh, like some more?
Mr. Mayor of City Commissioners, um, my name is William Hickford, and I reside in Oregon City, and, um, it's not very often that I, um, I have to express some displeasure about the process, but, um, but I will, in this regard, is that I attended every, every town hall meeting, every open house regarding the jug handle process. I tried to be, I'm very excited that this is happening, I'm, it's, it's something that's, it's no brainer, it has to happen, but the devil being in the details, I wanted to find out as much as I could about it, and the question, and I have spoken to this body before, about a second roundabout. And when I presented that idea to the, to the, uh, the engineer, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the gentleman's name that was doing this, he promised me, finally, after the second or third time that I suggested this to him, that he would sketch out a diagram for me to tell me how it could possibly work. And he has never followed through, and I promise. And the basic idea, I think that you all of you are familiar with the design of the project, where we have this whole sort of a roundabout on one side, on the other side, this comes to a stop sign, a stop light, which to me is just moving part of the block to the other side, part of the blockage to the other side. So there won't be a left turn lane going south on two thirteen. But when you go on the bridge and come around the other side, you're still gonna have to back up the light, and you're gonna have to make a left turn, and I've heard lots of excuses about, oh, well, there's right away, there's plenty of room for it, oh, well, uh, there's, uh, they really couldn't come up with a real, um, clear answer to me. But I was promised that I would get a design as to how it could work or how it couldn't work. Now, I don't wanna hold the design up, but I wanna hold the project up, I would need to express my displeasure that that promise was never fulfilled, and I never saw a reason why there's a stoplight on the other side instead of a roundabout.
Thank you. Yeah, and, um, I wanna apologize to William, because he actually reminded me of this, and, um, it slipped my memory since I saw you last, so we'll get, we'll get you that, and, um, I'll get, I'll provide it to the city commissioners so you can see what the reasoning was behind not putting in a second roundabout at this, in this project.
Could you, I don't know, I guess it's my memory, but, uh, the seat where you're talking about was what, had it go?
It would be, um, it would be on the west side of the jug handle, at the end of the west jug handle. So there'll be a roundabout where the new Washington Street intersects Clackamas River Drive, and then where the new intersection is from Washington Street and the jug handle, there'll be a traffic signal there.
I thought it would be an advantage to Home Depot to have a roundabout that could spin people around and drop them right into their parking lot.
That would be a great advantage to them.
Is, is the signal gonna be on Washington Street, I'm confused, kind of, it'd be on Washington Street, and the point is jug handle connects up to the highway?
There'll be a signal, but, so, right, the, in your, um,
The map, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
In your map, um, Washington Street. The traffic signal he's speaking on is right here. Okay. Let's see if I can move this.
I'll try to back up again.
It's hard to explain in words, it's better to point on a map.
Yeah, picture being worth a thousand words.
Okay, so it would be. Can I see? Let me see that. So there's, oh, let me just do a brief explanation, here's the entire project. Okay. And the two segments on the south side are the jug handles. There's the west jug handle, that will connect to Washington Street, and there's the east jug handle that will connect to Clackamas River Drive.
Right.
The east jug handle will have a roundabout, the west jug handle will be a traffic signal, a signalized intersection.
At which point?
Where, where the west jug handle connects to the new Washington Street and Washington Street.
That's what I'm saying, I just wanted to make sure the road's penalization on Highway two thirteen, so.
Right, okay.
No, I don't.
For right turns, there will be.
Got it.
Yeah, got it.
Okay, and so.
And we did look at, we did look at it, the traffic engineers looked at that carefully, and they have reasons why they chose not to, and what you're looking for is that explanation with a sketch. Yeah, and I really apologize for not, um, getting that to you before this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I guess here's the observation, I mean, your selection process came up, and, uh, rip it you, it's likely happened, if they were, well, it was meant to, it appears. Um, and I assume that all these people have had experience moving bridges into place.
Yes, that was, that was one of the things we were looking for, and there was an incredible amount of responses that were included in the packet, and they got, the scoring was, um, we had criteria, we had specific scores you could give for certain capabilities, and, um, one of the important scores was for specific experience with moving bridges vertically, horizontally, rapid bridge construction, jacking bridges into place, and, um, so this company has experience in that.
Do we get all front roads each to want that process to occur, I mean, that's amazing.
If you want to.
I think, I mean, that's.
We have to keep you out of the way a little.
The, the question, I guess, is what I have, is the bridge, I'll say, free pad onsite, or is it a free pad elsewhere?
It'll be constructed on the west side of two thirteen, um, and then moved and jacked into place from that location.
And it's, yeah, a big bridge can be moved on the highway, but I suppose it's possible. Thank you, yes.
I'm looking, under Article two, it talks about time of completion, and this, this could be that I didn't see it, but it gives a completion date and time, um, calendar days, but I don't see any penalties attached to that.
This is why I need to find.
Probably, probably, it's not, it was, that are references.
Yeah, we do, I would, I would, if, if I'd only answered that question, it would've come specifically with a citation, and I can get it to you, but there are looking at data damages, and there's also, there's a number of actually unique things in our special provisions that address traffic control issues, and a number of things that are a little unique to this contract, and I'd be happy to get you a copy of those, 'cause I think they'll address a lot of people's concerns about, well, what if they, what if they're not open at six A M. in the morning, after they've got a night closure? And there, if there are a number of different, um, penalties of different portions of the contract, not just the entire schedule.
It's part of Article one.
Okay.
And secondly, um, having driven Grand Avenue for several years, um, look at these signs that say businesses are open, and those are very, very helpful.
Yeah, there will be, and because it's a city project, we can actually put business names on the signs, in which O D A is not allowed to do that, so we'll have names.
Any other thoughts?
What do you?
Well, the motion would be to award the contract to, um, Moott Construction Company.
So moved.
Okay.
So moved and seconded, moved by, uh, Commissioner Mumm, and seconded by, um. Hold on, Miss Nacita. Oh, please, don't give me, I was giving this to, the, 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 the law foundation, oh, for goodness sake.
Commissioner Mumm?
Yes.
Commissioner Roth?
Hi.
Commissioner Nacita?
Hi.
Mayor Neely?
Hi.
As you know, this one, I think the final, uh, item on the general business is the, um, uh, the Resolution eleven oh ten, supporting Oregon City application for transportation growth management grant for a tunnel to pass, phase two, downtown Oregon, we're looking forward to this one.
Thank you, um, Mayor Neely, evening Commissioners. Um, we are proposing, as in a transportation growth management, a request for a transportation growth management grant to continue on with the, um, initial circulation study that we did downtown and build upon that, and that we received funding for from a quick response grant from the Department of Land Conservation and Development. Um, as you know, out of that study, we decided to implement two-way traffic on, on Main Street. So now what we're gonna do is look at the side streets, uh, and we'd be focusing primarily on between tenth and tunnel is the gateway coming in from the south of ninety ninety into the city, the tenth, and then primarily Sixth Streets, Eighth Street and Ninth Streets, between Main Street and Railroad Avenue, as well as Railroad Avenue, and then we'd also be focusing on the alleys, um, and, and how those can be designed for pedestrian bicycle, um, should they be open to, uh, vehicles, should they not? So we'd be looking at those connections, and then also the alleys, uh, we would, uh, be looking at the alleys from railroad through to ninety ninety, as well as the two alleys on both sides of the bridge, uh, where it does intersect with Main Street. Um, uh, we'd also be looking at, um, some pedestrian scale design alternatives for those alleys and some, uh, some identified intersections, um, in, along railroad and East Street, um, to come out of this project. Um, and I'd like to really like to thank Lloyd Gertie, he worked closely with Moott planner Pete Walter in putting together this application, um, prepared, prepared quite a significant part of the narrative that went into the T G M Brent application, um, as well as, um, Eric Wal, Waldron from, uh, the Special Hours Department. Uh, they did quite a bit of work, and Eric is managing the project right now downtown, uh, so he provided great deal of input in terms of timing and, and what they need down there for that circulation study to, uh, supplement the initial findings. So with that, we are requesting, um, that you do support this, uh, Resolution eleven oh nine, uh, supporting our application, uh, to, uh, the Oregon Department of Transportation, and to that, any other questions that you may have?
Any questions? I heard moved.
So moved. Second. Now it's all there.
Okay, go ahead and do your call, please.
Commissioner Mumm?
Yes.
Commissioner Roth?
Hi.
Commissioner Nacita?
Hi.
Mayor Neely?
Hi.
Uh, as we should pass it, you're on this one. And with that, uh, we're going on to, I believe, we have the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, we didn't, nobody suggested pulling anything, so I presume there's no reason to pull it. That, and I heard motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I'll do it better this time. Moved by, uh, Commissioner Mumm, and seconded by President Nacita. Your call, please.
Commissioner Mumm?
Yes.
Commissioner Roth?
Hi.
Commissioner Nacita?
Hi.
Mayor Neely?
Hi.
As you know, this one, um, and I guess we're ready for, um, the city manager's report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just two things, I wanna mention the, uh, Friday highlights, um, that we talked about in our goal setting. We're gonna, we're starting that, I had planned that we would begin that this Friday, but, um, Terry Bankhead, who's been working on it mostly, and is gonna be responsible for pulling the information together, probably saw my email earlier today, that she's a severe sprained ankle, then she got the flu, and now, uh, she's got a family emergency on top of that, so your thoughts and prayers for Terry would be welcome at this time. Uh, so with that, we're probably gonna be delayed that by a week, and we're hoping that next Friday, and we'll call it the Friday that's important in honor of Joe Friday, because it's all set mostly facts, or just facts. I think it's a little opinion in there from time to time, but we'll try to keep that true, nonetheless. Um, this, this one, I also wanna reiterate, some of our staff and I were concerned, well, what if there's something they'd like to know that we leave off, 'cause, you know, when we're forming our commission, we're always, we're always guessing, how much is too much, how much is enough? And so it's not designed to be all inclusive, we're gonna make our best effort to highlight things each department is doing that week, but, for example, we kinda joked about this, the chief probably won't be putting something on there and force the law. This is a given, so the things we're doing that are a given, that you already know we're doing, it's more, what I've told the staff is, something you think might end up on the front page of a newspaper, that would be a good thing.
Yeah.
Uh, cutting cottonwood trees is Scott's experience, might be a good thing, that would be something we would put in there that we're working on. So it's a work in progress, so bear with us, uh, it also, unfortunately, probably won't eliminate all of my emails to you, uh, but it might get them in to more of a coalesced form, which I think would be convenient for many of our commissioners. So we'll be working on that next Friday, and also, just wanna make mention of the Main Street tour. Uh, well, Main Street put it together, and also Dan, assisted, Doug Neely and I attended that in the rain, mostly rain. Uh, I think we're the only ones here, most of you were working, uh, there was a big turnout, uh, the bus was full, and I happened to choose to drive on my own, and it's a good thing I did, 'cause there was, the bus was full, and we had a lot of enthusiasm. Uh, the, the same woman, I'm trying to remember her name, Michelle Reeves, I lose her name, she was the planner who came and addressed one of the Main Street workshops. Uh, it's so powerful to show people, uh, instead of just talking about it, or even the slides that she brought, brought to the presentation and training, I think Jimmy was a part of it, uh, the slides were good, but not as powerful as actually going on the ground to the sites and seeing some of the creative things that they've done there, inspiring. And I was looking around at property owners, some of the newest property owners of some of our buildings, seeing that they were taking notes, and they seemed to be. of our buildings, seeing that they were taking notes, and they seemed to be very enthusiastic. It generated a lot of ideas. But to me, if it generates even a single new investment in our community, it was worthwhile. And it was a great turnout. Thank you again, Lloyd, for helping organize that. And with that, that's all I have.
Anybody else with a request? Commissioner Mum, if you want to say anything about Southport.
Southport, um, yeah, why don't you talk about that?
I'll take you to the Commissioner's comments first. Any reports of the other Commissioners that you'd like to look?
I just want to make a request to the Commission. I made the suggestion by email, but I've gotten kind of radio silence in response. I'd like the Commission to make an acknowledgement, maybe through some kind of a word certificate presented by the mayor, to the two gentlemen who had rescued the lady in the fire on Center Street. I was present at that event, and they really, really saved her life. She would have died if they had not been to rescue her, and I think she made us her some kind of commendation.
I'd like to mention, I was, I was out of the, practically out of the country when that occurred, but that didn't just fall into, as we talked about in our staff meeting, and I asked Chief Conrad to talk to the fire department about that possibility and try to see what they were doing and see if we could coordinate that. So I think the chief may have, do you have chief any update on that?
Well, I talked to Seet McAdoo, who is the P.I.O. for Clackamas Fire District, and he is going to talk to Italian B.C. Jimmy Corn, who is responsible for the recognition of citizens in the community, and they thought that they might do a presentation. If you'd like, we can do, I'm sure we can accommodate those two individuals in one ear for the mayor to do, in addition to the fire district. But we thought since we're the fire and directly related to the activities, we'd suggest they listen very excited to do it, but we certainly can use the idea if we want our recognition to the city, too.
Or I'll just make the presentation here?
I certainly have to do that.
Yeah, sure. That's great.
Any other?
I was just reporting, I'm a library board attendant, they had a consultant here who did, gave a presentation on several different libraries that were being considered, and an overview of sites that are being considered in Oregon City, and it was mostly an educational process for us to look at the site and design.
Okay. Where are the specific sites that we're actually going for, interest?
They're along this, I think, point.
I was going to request maybe that at the next commission meeting, if I could present this, I know it's just in general discussion, but those library board meetings are also public meetings, while it's not in this, I'm sure.
No, I mean, that's part and purpose, that we have a council liaison on that, on that research committee, and liaison can report back, or we can, when she comes, under my reports. So just let us know, and one of us or all of us will let you know where we're at.
I will, I will.
There's no way to list.
I have communicated with two county commissioners regarding accounting property, and I will be speaking to the other two county commissioners this next week.
I would be very interested in hearing your feedback.
Yeah, I coordinate this with our library director, she's aware that I'm actually making a work. The, you know, we had that recent flood, and of course, it wasn't as dramatic as the, as either the 1964, 1996 floods. But in fact, both the Sandy and Clackamas Rivers' flood stages were very, very high. The volume coming along, the other Clackamas was, I think, I think it was originally one of the fourth greatest volumes that they've recorded on the Clackamas River. Some damage resulted on the, on the treatment pump station, trees actually slammed in, threw into what they call the prau. The actual pumping equipment and the filling equipment was never, never an issue, it was fine. The result of the flood was, damage was incurred on wooden structures on the outside, and also washed around the treatment plant and caused scouring behind the treatment plant along the bank. And I don't know the cost of, referring to areas on at this time, but there's going to be a sentiment by federal agencies as to what has to be done on that scour proportion. We'll probably have boulders and so forth in the back there. But it did not in any way impact the treatment pumping and so forth, but it does suggest how powerful a river the Clackamas is. And that, that's probably one of the more important things I think I'll discuss at that particular meeting. The other thing I wanted to do was indicate that we either, we're unbuild positions on our various boards, we have either filled them all, or we have sufficient applicants to choose from to fill all of those that were announced, stayed one. And I wanted to announce here that we, we have a position open on the Historic Review Board, and it's a position that I'm actually going to probably contact a couple of individuals about it, because it is one that requires an architect. Can be a landscape architect, as well as a, other kind of architect, non-landscape architect. But there's one individual that I think I'll speak to that has served several years on the planning commissions, and a very good member, and had expressed some interest of perhaps going on to the Historic Review Board. I'll remind you that that position is open.
Who is it from?
Then.
From the H.R.P., why is that position open?
Because it's an architect, well, actually, he extended six months, but it was, I see, love the position. He actually extended his position on there six months, and we'll define somebody, but it'll be damaged, it'll be contacted. If anybody has any other suggestions, I would suggest simply speaking to the individual and indicating that that position is currently unbuilt. It's one of the oftentimes the most difficult to fill, because it's a specialized position, but it's an important one. And I believe that's all the announcements I had, and the tour was a good one. I would just make a comment that I did in the last impact meeting, all discussions still center around greenhouse gas emissions and the contribution primarily, of course, of traffic and residential and commercial use. And it seems to be, at this point, the major focus of impact levels. The next one has been canceled, but I'm sure we'll be coming back to those issues. And that's all I have to say. I think that's it, and I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting. See you all.